May we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Chavez.
Here.
Councilmember Viscara.
Here.
Councilmember Yu.
Here.
Mayor Protem Mann.
Here.
Mayor Sternquist.
Here. Okay, we move to item three, the invocation, and Jerry Janbazian is here to do that for us this evening.
Brother Janbazian.
If you would please stand and join us in the invocation.
Let's bow in prayer, please. Dear Heavenly Father, we are grateful for the opportunity to come before you tonight to ask for your blessing upon tonight's meeting. We further ask that you give our mayor and Mayor Protem and the council members an extra measure of clarity and wisdom with transparency as they make decisions for our benefit. We also pray and thank you for all the support staff that equipped them with needed information. We look forward to you, O Lord, as we have nowhere else to turn. Our world is in turmoil with war and rumors of war. We continue to pray for all in leadership over us, including the elected officials in our county, our state, and Washington DC. I pray, O Lord, that we would return to civil obedience and a return to consequences for bad behavior. All the good that comes to us comes at the local level. We have much to thank you for, including our new park, renovated library, and impending street improvements, along with new park playground equipment. We look forward to a return of in-person events such as Halloween at Live Oak Park and Neighborhood Watch this Thursday. In just a few short weeks, we will honor all the veterans that have given their lives in defense of our freedom we enjoy. Lord, we continue to pray for the youth of our community as there are many things that would distract them and harm them, such as illicit drugs. We also pray for our deputies at Temple Station and our firefighters at Station 47. Protect them as they have a difficult job. We ask this all in your mighty name and for your glory. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Jerry. Please join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we move to item five ceremonial matters presentations. Item A, Paint the Town Purple proclamation. Diana Joy, Relay for Life, is here. Welcome.
Hi.
Is your mic on?
Is it on? Oh, okay. I just need to talk closer. We do paint the town purple to help spread the word about Relay for Life of Temple City and get everyone excited about the upcoming relay, which is Saturday, November 5th, from 11:00 AM to 8:00 PM here at Temple City Park. This Saturday, we will have student volunteers paired with adult volunteers going down Las Tunas from Roland to Rosemead Boulevard, tying purple bows on all the trees. And they'll stay up until after the relay. And just to tell you, this is our 11th relay. Our Relay for Life of Temple City has raised over a half a million dollars for American Cancer Society. And we're working on adding to that this year. So we hope that some of you will be able to come out on the 5th and join us for our festivities and help support the team booths and their fundraisers. And have a great day with us.
Thank you so much. I didn't. All right, and we have a proclamation for you, if you want mine coming up and getting that, ladies?
Okay, the city of Temple City would like to present to you with this proclamation. We're painting the town purple on this Saturday, correct?
Yes.
Whereas the American Cancer Society is a nationwide, community-based volunteer health organization dedicated to eliminating cancer as a major health problem by preventing cancer, saving lives, and diminishing suffering from cancer through research, education, advocacy, and service. Therefore, I, Cynthia Sternquist, mayor of Temple City, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim the city of Temple City to be a Relay for Life city and urge every citizen to join the American Cancer Society in the fight against cancer. Signed, October 18th, 2022.
I so appreciate your support.
Of course.
Have any more questions?
Question, there is?
And finally, strong cheers.
Yeah.
And I'd just like to share with the public.
Okay.
I would just like to share with the public that it is such a great event and it is so well worth your time and effort to come out and see everything that these ladies and all the people, men and women, who come together on that day to participate in Relay for Life. Unfortunately, this year on November 5th, I will not be in the country. And I'm sad to miss it, but I want you all to know that I'm there in spirit. So thank you again, and please, everyone, come out and support Relay for Life. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
When are you leaving, Mayor?
Um, I believe it's the 5th.
You may not want to be there.
But I do have a house sitter. Staying at my home with my two very, as Fernando knows, brave dogs that don't let anybody get within two feet of my front door without causing a fuss. But anyway, I'm sorry that I will be missing Relay for Life this year. Okay, do we, no other public comments, Peggy? We move to item six, not items, and we don't have any, we have two of them. Okay, we have one for on that item. And Mary, we have Mary Sneed with the 100th anniversary. And we're going to find out what that is about. So, welcome, Mary.
Mayor Sternquist and council members. As you know, about a week ago, the Historical Society of Temple City had our grand reopening of our museum. It was, it was a great day. Took, we've been renovating the museum for about two years. And it's now reopened. Anyway, I'm going to get, come back to that in just a second. But next year marks the 100th anniversary of Temple City's founding. And I'm hoping, as the museum director and curator and member of the society, that we'll be working very closely with the city council and city hall to make this a really great celebration. You'll notice in front of you, you have a little goody bag. Inside the goody bag, there is a postcard from the first anniversary of Temple City. And so 99 years later, we're going to be celebrating the 100th anniversary next year. So I hope we can work closely with you. I know the Homestead Museum is anxious to work with us also. They helped us out during our renovation by storing many of our artifacts because they have climate control and we don't. So we got all of our items back. We had a teacher preview today and we had some, some small children work, interacting with some of our displays. So I hope you'll have a chance in the future to come by and see what we've done. Coming back to the grand opening. You know, I wear different hats, so this is, I'm going to be using different hats here. I appreciate Councilmember Chavez coming to the opening and also our city manager, Brian Cook. And I want to thank Brian, not just for coming to the opening. I'm not, I'm not skipping you, Tom. I'm just.
He does more work than I do, so that's okay.
But with one of my other hats, as you know, I'm also on the school board. And Brian came to welcome our interim superintendent. He also came back and welcomed our new superintendent, who is Dr. Arkuna, who will be starting at the beginning of November. But Brian, I really appreciate you coming out and showing support for not only city matters, but also community matters and school matters. So I appreciate that. But I, the Historical Society does look forward to working with you. I know you always do a bang-up job when we had the 50th anniversary, the 60th anniversary of incorporation, but this is a pretty big deal. And we look forward to working with all of you and your staff.
You know what would be amazing is to have the city, the Historical Society, Kiwanis, Women's Club, and Camellia Festivals, all our organizations work together to plan 100th year anniversary. So if I could make that suggestion and maybe somebody can take the lead from one of the organizations and work with our city manager and our city staff, that would be really.
Absolutely. We're looking forward to working with everybody. This is a very big occasion. I know Homestead Museum already has some plans in the works for what they're doing out there. But I think it warrants having a pretty big celebration in town.
And I think it would take about 100 people to plan and volunteer for a celebration like that.
You really want 100 people in a room making decisions?
I do, I do.
Good luck with that one.
I'll come and moderate it for you.
Somebody asked you.
I had 500 once and it was fine. About a different issue, but anyway.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
I'm a little confused. So 100 years since, since the city was founded.
Founded.
By.
Walter P. Temple Senior.
So, but it didn't actually become a city until?
No, it was, it was, it was a city. It was not incorporated until 1960.
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right, cool. So we have two things to celebrate.
That's true.
Yeah, good. Because I think, wasn't it a few years ago, we celebrated our 50th?
And then you celebrated your 60th a while back too.
Yeah, great.
That was the one at St. Luke, correct?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, anyway. We hope, it's a big celebration and we're looking forward to working with all of you.
That's great. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
I'm sorry I had to miss that.
How to visit our region?
Thank you. Will do. Well, you did give me a preview, did you? Do you remember? I got to see it before the grand opening, a sneak preview. Okay, um, we move to item seven. Well, first of all, are there any other public comments from anyone in the audience who might not have filled out a card? Okay, so we're going to move to item seven, the consent calendar. And Brian, you want to tell us something about that?
Thank you, Mayor Sternquist and member of the council. Just two informational items on item C. That is related to getting reimbursed for rubberized pavement. The pavement project that you see now is not rubberized pavement. It is pure, for lack of a better term, asphalt. We're looking for this for projects for thoroughfares and others. So this won't provide any reimbursement related to the work that we're doing now. But when we look at like places like Baldwin, Lower Azusa, elsewhere, that's where that reimbursement is going to come back. And then lastly, on item D, the acceptance of a project. Typically, I would not come back or the city council would not accept a project like this. I would usually inform the council after the project is accepted. But because this is such a monumental project, I thought it was important to bring back to you. And then secondly, we've already kicked off the process of getting the grant reimbursement too. So this is kind of, it's not, it's not an obligatory step in that process, but that kicks off so that we, we have a receivable of about $2.8 million that we're starting to slowly get back from the state, which kicked off most recently. So I just wanted to bring those two points that, kind of milestone on the Primrose Park, but just as people, because we have a street project going on right now, I didn't want to give anybody the sense that this, we're going to be getting money back from the street project. This is local funds that we are actually deploying in the community, not reimbursable funds for the current street project. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, and if, Brian, if I may, would you just share with the public what the, I believe it's the teleconference, because we haven't talked about it for some time, why it's on there?
Sure, and I'll also defer to my colleague as well. Things will be changing shortly related to the teleconferencing laws. But that is, until February of next year, that is going to be in effect. That just allows us to, for example, we have a couple of council members ill in another location. That gives us the flexibility to do that. I'll defer my colleagues to some of the potential changes that are coming. And essentially, SB 8361 will essentially be going away soon.
So the changes are actually the subject of the city attorney's reports. I'm going to have you all wait for those. As, as the city manager said, the current process requires there to be a state of emergency. The governor has announced he's going to have the state of emergency lapse at the end of February. If there's a state of emergency and that includes, among other things, a belief or a restriction on gatherings or a belief that gatherings could cause the spread of disease, then you can adopt this resolution, which will cover you for 30 days. The 30 days, during that 30-day period, if you have a need to meet by teleconference, instead of meeting in person, you can do so by following the guidelines in, in the law. We've been continuing to adopt this because, as the city manager said, there's still, there's still a state of emergency and there's still a chance that a council member or a commissioner, because this covers them too, someone could get sick and need to join a meeting by Zoom. Again, that will be going away once the state of emergency goes away. But the law's not, the law's not evaporating. It will be there in the future for future states of emergency. If, for example, there's an earthquake eight years from now, the council at that time, under a state of emergency, could declare the need to meet by remote means and follow the statute the way we've been doing. But for us right now, we're continuing to adopt it, at least for the next month or two. And we can pull you on whether you want to. But for the next month or two, it does give flexibility if someone is ill. So that's why we're doing it.
Okay, thank you, Greg, and I look forward to your report.
Thank you. Put, put me on the spot later.
Okay, we move to item eight, public hearing.
Hold on, so we didn't do anything with seven.
Oh, that's right. Can we have a motion?
Well, I would, before we have a motion, I would like to pull item 7F, please.
What was 7F, Tom?
That's the request for the temporary street and lane closures on Las Tunas for the runaway from drugs.
Okay, go ahead.
So we can do a motion to approve. I'll make a motion that we approve the consent calendar other than item 7F.
I'll second.
Okay, can we, any objections? Peggy?
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Mann?
Yes.
Mayor Sternquist?
Yes. Tom?
Yeah, thank you. So the only reason I had to pull, I just want to highlight, actually, this item that is on the consent calendar, since we just heard our event on November 5th for the Relay for Life. We are also having another event that's same morning, which is the item 7F on our agenda, which is the Runaway from Drugs Run and Walk. I know Brian is helping out the sheriff with this as well. And Mary just left, but I'm glad she, she didn't hear it, but I'm sure she's aware of it. You know, it's obviously, there's a big issue right now with drugs and safety and stuff for our students. And it's a, you know, never-ending issue that has been around for a while now. And so it's a good event and I hope that perhaps we can convince those who plan on coming to the Relay for Life also maybe put this on their, their daily schedule that day as well and make it a whole day thing. It's a worthy event and just wanted to highlight it and look forward to seeing everybody out in the morning. This is, I think, Brian, if I understand, and you don't need to get up, but it's on the Las Tunas Drive between Muscatel and Baldwin.
Correct.
Correct. Different streets will be closed that day temporarily. There will be some lane closures, so we ask the public for their patience, of course, in this as well. But we've done these before and they've always been a very, a big success and I'm sure this one will be as well. So, so it's a big, important day, November 5th on all ends, so just wanted to pull it for that.
And Brian, do they meet on Muscatel? If you want to, so anyone can participate, right?
Yeah, so staging and the start and finish line will be in front of Temple Station. They may start to meet in the Kmart parking lot on the north side by the automotive repair place. And the run will start in front of the station on Las Tunas and proceed east towards Encinita or Baldwin, depending on if they're walking.
Do they need to pre-register?
There is a pre-registration, and so that information, once approved tonight, we will go ahead and put it out with the city and the sheriff's department to put out that information for that registration.
Okay.
And it is hosted, I might add, by the Chinese-American Federation.
Oh, nice.
And, and the county sheriff, and of course, Temple City is assisting with that as well, so.
Tom, would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to approve.
Actually, I was glad Councilmember Chavez pulled this item, but I was going to ask a question on it. I mean, same thing, you know, having two big events in our little city. I was just wondering about logistic issues, if there might be some logistic issues with a lot of people visiting, perhaps because of Relay for Life, and then they found Las Tunas closed. And I think both events are starting in the morning.
Uh, this, this events, this event, well, the closure will end at about 11:00. Relay for Life actually starts at noon. And it's just, it just, it, the footprint of Relay for Life is just around Temple City Park. So there'll be, there'll be, there'll be a little bit of act, there'll be, there'll be more congested activity.
Folks coming to set up and all that.
Yeah, and we'll.
Found it, kind of.
Yeah, we'll, we will do our best. There'll be, there will be a ton of activity that day. But I know Brian has laid out a really good safety plan for this event and we'll make sure to work with the Relay for Life. I see Adam in the back as well. We'll make sure to, we'll make sure from a staging standpoint for the Relay for Life folks, they have enough room and everything else to do what they need to do safely and securely.
Okay, so both organizers are aware of each other?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll get them all, we'll get them all squared away, sir.
Yeah, I asked the same question earlier.
Yeah.
There's a lot to take in one day.
It's, it's going to, Mr. Azumi is going to be pretty exhausted by the end of the day.
But I think we should be able to handle it. When one is ending, the other will be beginning. So there'll be a little bit of.
Yeah, I like that, that idea of the synergy between the two.
Thank you for asking.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve item 7.
I'll second.
Okay, if no objections, may we have a roll call?
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Mann?
Yes.
Mayor Sternquist?
Yes. Okay, that's approved. Thank you. All right, item eight, public hearing. Item A, draft housing element for the sixth cycle, 2021-2029. State Housing Element Law requires that all cities and counties in California establish a long-range plan to meet their fair share of regional housing needs. As a mandatory component of a general plan, a housing element needs to be updated every eight years to reflect the regional and local needs and be reviewed and certified by HCD. And we have our community development director, Scott Reimers, to give us a.
Mayor, if I could, if I could start a brief introduction.
Brian interrupts. Go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Before you tonight is the draft housing element. The Lisa Wise Consulting Group, Jen, who's with us on Zoom right now, will kind of be going over that. Again, a lot of credit to our staff, along with our consultant and our planning commission. And thank, thank you to all of you. Hestie Liu, one of our associate planners, and our community development director, Scott Reimers. If I was to encapsulate what, what's being presented to you today, you may be hearing from other communities right now about the struggles they're having with their housing element. And the key component of that is really, for lack of a better term, having to upzone areas of the community, our one, our two, and our three zones, to meet the RENA numbers. We have not had to do that through this process. What's being presented to you today and the exchanges that staff and Jen from Lisa Wise's office have been having with HCD is really about the programmatic elements of instituting and, and, and having a certified, hopefully soon, certified housing element. I think that's a big, that's a kudos to staff, that's kudos to the planning commission, and that's kudos to the council, because what established that was the 2017 general plan, which really looked at creating housing, meeting the needs, anticipating that the state would be asking for and demanding these changes, but doing it in a way that fit the characteristics and of the community. I think that was, it was, it was almost threading a needle, you know, threading the needle in, in many ways through this process, and we've done that. So before you tonight is really the culmination of all that effort over the last few years, a lot of going back and forth with HCD. But what you see tonight is truly programmatic. It is not, you don't see any changes to our zoning code or anything that's truly fundamental to what land use priorities and policies that both the planning commission and ultimately you, as the council, have given us legislative direction on. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr., our community development director, Mr. Reimers.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and city council members. Planning is a very wide field. And so we, you know, we include things like historic preservation, transportation, planning, zoning, and housing elements is its own kind of subset. And so often for projects of this type that do get very detailed, where there is a lot of planning law, we go out and we hire a consultant who has an expertise. And Lisa Wise Consulting, especially Jen Murillo here, who's with us tonight and who has helped her, David Bergman, have considerable amount of experience with housing elements. They actually helped Long Beach with theirs, and you can imagine how complex Long Beach's housing element must be. They also have a number of clients throughout the state, which means that they have housing elements at different stages of review. So they're constantly learning what HCD is looking for in all of those different housing elements. All of that means to say that we have a great consultant on board who has been helping us over the last two years. The one thing I did want to mention to you before we get too far into this is one question almost always comes up when it comes to housing and affordable housing, and that's what does low income or moderate income mean? And so I'll just tell you upfront, for a family of four, that means you have an income of about $97,000. So that's what affordable hous, that's what moderate income housing is. And then one other fact I wanted to highlight is that we often think of Temple City as a very well-to-do, well-off city. But in many ways, in terms of housing, we're very similar to LA County. For instance, in terms of LA County, we have the same population that's below the poverty line. We have more seniors who are actually extremely low income than the county does. We have more people who are cost burdened in terms of rental and for-sale units. And that, all, all that to say that we do have a lot of people who are in need of affordable housing in our community, and that's why we're providing you this plan that's before you tonight. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jen, and she'll go ahead and walk us through different components of the housing element.
Great, thank you all very much. Can you all hear me and see my screen?
Yes.
Wonderful, thank you so much. It's a pleasure to be before you tonight for your housing element update hearing. Thank you for the lovely introduction and foundation to get us rolling. The presentation we have will go through a brief overview of housing elements. Then we'll dive into some highlights related to housing needs and conditions within the. Then we'll dive into some highlights related to housing needs and conditions within the city. And then we'll talk about the revisions to the housing element that's before you tonight and close with the recommendation and next steps. So first, as a refresher on what the housing element is and why it's being done, it is a requirement of state law. Housing elements, in terms of their content and when they must be updated, is prescribed in state law. They must be updated every eight years, and they must be reviewed and approved or certified by the state, the State Department of Housing and Community Development. Housing elements look at existing housing needs as well as conditions in the city, and then document how the city will plan for and accommodate its fair share of housing. And that's the regional housing need allocation, which I'll speak to shortly. And then the housing element sets forth a program, goals, policies, and actions that the city will undertake over the eight-year period. And in this case, the housing element will run through 2029. State law prescribes specific components and analysis that must be included in the housing element, and you've seen that before you tonight. We have a review of your current housing elements programs and an analysis of how those can be improved upon. And we have an assessment of the needs within the community, looking at demographic trends and housing trends and identifying specific needs of special needs housing groups as well. We look at housing constraints for potential impediments to the production of housing, and we identify an adequate inventory of sites to accommodate your RENA. So that looks at land resources within the community. We also have an analysis of fair housing. This is a new requirement of this cycle. It wasn't included in our original draft, as the guidance from the state came out quite late for Southern California. But I'll talk about some of the analysis points we found and the programs that resulted from that tonight. We also include resources for supporting the development of housing, both programmatic and financial. And then lastly, a critical component is the implementation plan, which documents those actions the city will undertake over the cycle. As was mentioned, this process was started back in the end of 2020, and we released a draft housing element in July of last year. At that time, we also submitted it to the state for review. That draft did not include the fair housing analysis. That was drafted later after state guidance was issued and submitted subsequently to HCD. We went through a couple rounds of review with the state, and we went back to planning commission in September, last month, got planning commission's recommendation for adoption, and are before you tonight. And this exercise in terms of going through multiple reviews with the state is just the norm this cycle. This sixth cycle has been extremely complex and complicated, and we are seeing all jurisdictions going through multiple reviews with the state just due to complexity, new legal mandates, and actually changing legal mandates kind of midstream during this process. So thank you for bearing with us, and city staff, of course, has been wonderful during this process. Outreach is a critical component for the housing element, and there was a dedicated webpage on the city's website, email notifications, social media posts, virtual meetings were all conducted. After the draft housing element was released, the city put forth a two-page fact sheet to help provide a digestible summary of the draft for the community. Then we conducted a community meeting and study session to talk about the draft before making revisions. The city also went through extensive length to outreach for a survey that was offered in both English and Chinese, got almost 260 respondents. And all that feedback has been used to make revisions and improve and be responsive in the housing element you have before you tonight. So hitting on a few needs and conditions to set the stage for the housing element. As Mr. Reimers mentioned, about half of Temple City's households are considered lower income. Even though the distribution of household income across the city is pretty similar to the county as a whole, Temple City does have about half of households that are considered to be lower income. And in this case, lower income could be a family of four with a household income in the low $90,000s or so. So just to give a perspective of that threshold. And when we talk about being housing cost burdened or overpaying for housing, that's talking about households spending more than 30% of their income towards housing costs. And Temple City does experience a higher rate of being cost burdened compared to the region, six out of 10 renters being cost burdened. And not surprisingly, households with lower incomes have a, are much more likely to be cost burdened than households with higher incomes. The fair housing analysis, which is the new component, one of the many new components this cycle, but one component that came out a little late and that we've addressed and have a few slides on here, looks at specific housing criteria and characteristics within the city boundaries. So not just looking at data points across the city as a whole, but looking at different specific areas across the city, mainly over census tracts. And so this is with the intent of looking kind of at an internal fair housing analysis and look at programs that can improve fair housing conditions within the city. So for example, the map on the left shows the percentage of low to moderate income households within the city. And you see that once you get east of Encinita Avenue, there's a higher proportion of low or moderate income households compared to elsewhere in the city. The map on the right looks at environmental conditions. So using a state screening tool or a rating tool for environmental conditions, you see lower environmental conditions relatively within the city, also west of Encinita Ave. So here's an instance where you can see potentially looking at poorer environmental conditions where you have a higher concentration of lower income households. So these are the types of criteria that have been analyzed and that we have programs set forth to help to address. Another example of criteria we analyze looks at access to opportunity. So the map on the left looks at access to opportunity as defined by the California Tax Credit Allocation Committee, or TCAC. TCAC identifies resource levels in communities for the purposes of rating applications for low-income tax credits for the purposes of fair housing. And it looks at factors like employment rates, poverty rates, educational proficiency, exposure to environmental hazards. And in Temple City, you are scored as a high and highest resource community, so a high-quality community, desirable place to live. The map on the right identifies potential risk of displacement. So communities or residents more vulnerable to displacement, considering factors like proportion of rental households, low-income households, concentrations of people of color, and things of that nature to look at areas that may be vulnerable to displacement. And in this case, with a highly desirable place to live, you've got the potential for a risk of displacement, too. So again, these are considerations we have folded into the programs in our reviews with HCD. The RENA, we've talked about already a bit. This is the allocation of units that the city must plan for in this housing element in terms of showing capacity. The city has an allocation of just over 2,000 units across income categories from very low to market rate. And this is the number of units that the city must plan to or have zoning that can accommodate. It's not saying that the city must build these units, but it must set the stage through zoning and available or vacant land to accommodate. And I'll talk specifically about the site's inventory in a moment. So using all those considerations in the draft housing element, the draft that was released in July of last year, again, we've revised it based on comments we've received from the public through the planning commission and city council meetings, but largely through the fair housing analysis and comments from HCD. And the revised draft housing element that was brought forth for hearings was released in early September ahead of the planning commission hearing. And the housing element itself, the structure remained the same, should look familiar to you all. The largest change was the addition of that Appendix F for fair housing, and the five goals remain the same, but mainly included new programs that fell under Goal E for promoting fair housing opportunities. The site's inventory here is a summary of the city's capacity to accommodate the RENA. We have accessory dwelling units, entitled and proposed projects, and the site inventory. The site inventory includes vacant land or underutilized land that could be available for housing, zoned in zones that allow for residential. So even though during our reviews with HCD, we did adjust these numbers to be more conservative, as was mentioned at the beginning of this meeting, we do still have a surplus, a solid surplus of capacity to accommodate your RENA, meaning that there is no upzoning required, no changing to zones to accommodate this six-cycle RENA, which is a heavy lift that a lot of jurisdictions are seeing, rezoning.
May I ask a question? How do you determine if something, a certain development is actually low income or very low, moderate? How do you determine that? For example, ADUs, how do you say, well, we have 41, we have potential development, 41 extremely low-income ADUs, and six moderate? How do you make that, how do you determine that?
Sure. There is, specifically to ADUs, we go back, we go back a few years for the track record and trends of the city's building permits issued for accessory dwelling units, and we project that forward. And that is a methodology that HCD has said is satisfactory to use for projecting the total number of units. In terms of the income distribution, the Southern California Association of Governments actually did a region-wide survey that identified, based on surveys for rent levels being offered for ADUs and studios, and put together, put forth a recommended income split or distribution for accessory dwelling units. So we're using that survey method to be able to identify how those projected ADUs would be split into varying income levels.
I actually have a follow-up question.
I'm not sure I really even understood that.
Yeah.
I don't know if you did, but.
No, I don't, but I was just glad to see the numbers.
It somehow linked into income.
Right.
Is it just a formula that they imply?
I think.
I can try and take a shot at explaining as well. So when it comes to the ADUs and how those are distributed into different categories, the state required us to follow guidance from the Southern California Association of Governments. And the SCAG did an analysis of ADUs in their region and said, basically, what they found was that of all the ADUs they studied, they fell into these categories. About one, a certain percentage was extremely low income, another percentage was moderate, another percentage was above moderate. And so every community had to.
Do percentages to our numbers?
Exactly.
Oh, okay, that helps.
Well, if I may, I have a follow-up question to that. So let's say, so in this table, it says 82 of the ADUs are for above moderate. So let's say, in theory, two, three years from now, we build or approve 82 ADUs that fall into that category. Does that mean the city is then mandated to only allow ADUs for the categories below that?
No, so all that, because the plan is more about just demonstrating capacity to build, that's all we have to demonstrate. Once the ADU is approved, we do not have to follow up and say, okay, who's living there? How much rent is being charged? How many people are in the unit? Really, this is only about us demonstrating at the beginning of the process, do we have capacity to meet the RENA?
Okay.
So nobody comes back and checks?
Well, because it's extremely difficult to check, you know, who's living there? How much rent are they paying? How many people are in the unit? And all those other things.
And that could change tomorrow.
Exactly, yeah. Unless they're deed-restricted units, that's really the goal that you want to get, because then you know that those units are going to be restricted to affordable housing.
So it's essentially a tabletop exercise then?
Yes.
I have a very basic question. What does cost burden mean?
Cost burden means you, that you're spending more than 30% of your income on rent. So you're burdened with a large amount of either rent or a mortgage payment.
More than 30%?
Yeah, yes, sir. And then, so the other piece of this puzzle is the projects that are entitled and the projects that are in the site inventory. Those also are broken down into different categories based on low, very low, moderate, above moderate, and so forth. There, again, it's a tabletop exercise where the state has just provided guidance statewide, where they said, if you have a site of a certain characteristic, perhaps it's an allowed density over 30 units per acre or 60 units per acre, there's an expectation that a certain percentage of those units will be low, very low, or moderate.
Makes sense.
Thank you, Jen.
Thank you. Great questions. And yes, so bottom line, the city is in a, is in a good position, demonstrating RENA capacity. We don't have any more comments from HCD on this, so this is. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Shall I proceed? I have a few more slides. Okay, thank you. The site's inventory map, this identifies where the sites within the city are located. So these are properties that are vacant or underutilized. And as Mr. Reimers mentioned, the income category assigned to these sites is based on state guidance for density, allowed density being used as a proxy to identify income level. So for example, if sites allow over 30 units per acre in the zoning ordinance, we can identify those as lower income. So it is that exercise in just demonstrating capacity in this analysis. There is no obligation for these property owners to construct the number of units identified or at the income levels identified. And so we have some new programs we wanted to highlight tonight based on, again, largely the fair housing analysis and review with HCD. Those include programs to remove governmental constraints, things like decreasing efforts or actions that could decrease the timeline for permit approvals or planning approvals, looking at the thresholds for planning commission review or council review, putting together checklists for affordable housing projects as required by state law, and making sure that the city's ordinances all comply with state law. A program for the vacant residential building registry has been added. This is to continue that program, but look at being able to link up and promote. But look at being able to link up and promote available funding for rehabilitation efforts to folks on that list. A program for condominium conversions is included. The city already has a condo conversion ordinance that does provide for first right of refusal for existing tenants. But this program is looking at the possibility of establishing a threshold based on existing apartment vacancy rate across the city. Say, for instance, if apartments in the city, if there was a 5% vacancy rate, only if it was 5% or higher, would you allow apartments to convert into condominiums? That's just an example, but that would be analyzed and reviewed. The environmental justice goal implementation just looks at the improvements and development of the Crossroads Specific Plan, getting mixed-use development in there with the intent that that's going to result in reduced vehicle trips and air quality issues. Similarly, looking at a program that implements mitigation measures from your general plan and Crossroads Specific Plan, EIR, related to air quality and hazardous materials. For example, having a lead paint and asbestos abatement program, looking at providing funding to assist with the assessment of lead paint or asbestos and then abate those. And then landlord education and outreach, making sure, working with the Housing Rights Center, to offer educational workshops to landlords and property managers to inform them of current tenants' rights and protections related to displaced, anti-displacement. Since Temple City is a high-resourced community, it's a highly desirable, a high-opportunity area, any housing that goes into Temple City is considered to be, you know, providing housing in a, in a high-quality location. In this case, the targeting below-market-rate housing development program is the city doing outreach in terms of providing letters, information to property owners of those housing sites we've identified as potential for moderate or lower income to inform those owners of potential density or incentives or funding if they provide below-market-rate housing. And lastly, a program has been included to protect existing tenants. This program reiterates state law mandates about protecting existing tenants as well as the replacement of deed-restricted lower-income units. So those are all state law requirements memorialized in a program in your housing element. And the last round of comments from HCD was making sure that we have quantified or measurable metrics for these programs. So you will see in the housing element now that there are programs in terms of, or measures in terms of number of units, or number of households, number of workshops, things of that nature, as that's now required for, for the state in terms of their, you know, review over the cycle with annual progress reports. So that has been added, and we work closely with Mr. Reimers on that. So with that, we are recommending that the council adopt the addendum to the General Plan, EIR, that was prepared for the housing element update, amend the general plan, replacing the current housing element with the updated draft, and authorize the city manager or designate to make technical changes and non-substantive edits that may result from our final round of HCD review, just to ensure if there are any minor tweaks or comments that we can remedy those without going back for adoption hearings. So the next step after adoption is that the housing element would get resubmitted to HCD as an adopted housing element, and the city, or HCD has 60 days to review and issue a certification letter. So with that, thank you very much. Look forward to any other questions and comments.
Okay, thank you. Stay there. Okay, do we have some council questions? I know I have a few. Fernando?
Are there significant differences?
The significant differences that are before you tonight, the most significant difference that would have been before you tonight would be if we were planning to upzone a certain area in order to meet your RENA numbers. A lot of communities have been through that. We haven't had to go through that. So in that respect, this is not a significant change from your previous housing element. The most significant changes have been just new programs and policies. And most of those are really oriented to creating programs or policies that provide for fair housing issues, or bringing the, bringing our housing element into state law. Sorry?
Do ADUs fall into that?
Sure. One of the, one of the programs is to make sure that our ADU law is consistent with, with the newest state legislation. And a lot of the new programs that are in the housing element are really just making sure that our existing codes are in connection with, with the state law.
And the frustrating thing for us, and I think, I'm not going to speak for Lisa Weis and Consulor Jen, but this was kind of midstream for us as well in terms of the establishment of the process. So throughout kind of the cycle, HCD and the state kind of, I'm not, they didn't change the rules of the road, but they, they added some complexity that we had to layer on to. Otherwise, if this was almost 12 months ago, you wouldn't have seen that fair housing component. But that is now an essential required component of the, of the housing element that I think we took a very, obviously following the law, but also to not committing the city to things that we couldn't, there was no, there's no stretch goals there, per se, right now. They're what we are minimally required to do, but also meeting, meeting the spirit and the intent of the law.
Anything else?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember, you?
Just a minor procedural question. So let's say we submit it, and then HCD makes some comments, and then we're, we're authorizing Mr. City Manager to make the so-called, well, maybe even the stereotype of adjustments. Then we don't, then the housing element does not need to come back to the City Council. What if it's a fairly substantive kind of comment, and we, then does this housing element need to come back to us?
Yeah, if there are substantial changes, we would bring them back to the City Council. The, the last comment and the only comment we received from HCD in our last review was just to take the objectives we had already developed and put some numbers to them. So at this point, that was a pretty kind of an easy change, and so we would expect them to accept that, the changes, pretty quickly.
That's good. Thank you.
Okay, seven. All right. Councilmember Chavez?
So who administers these programs? For example, one of them is to conduct landlord education workshops. We don't do that, do we? Or do we refer these people to someone else who would actually set up to do that?
No. I have to say, this is almost all on the Community Development Department. So we will be working with other agencies at times to help us roll some of these programs out. So like, we will be working with the Housing Rights Center and ask them to come and host a workshop with our, with our landlords, things like that.
So, so unlike, unlike the program as a whole, where we just have to have the program, we don't have to build anything, we actually have to do these things?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so at some point in the next year, next eight years, we have to conduct a landlord education workshop?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And, and then obviously all the rest of these things?
Yes.
And it's just not upon somebody requesting it, but actually as affirmatively doing?
Yes.
And making it available?
Yeah.
If one person shows up, or two, or 10, or whatever, right?
Yes, we will do our best to put the news out there and get people...
You've got your work, I got cut out for it.
We sure do. Thankfully, though, there is money left in the grant that paid for the housing element to also put to do implementation of the housing element. So we will have some support there.
Good. Okay, thank you.
Mayor Protan?
I have a question about the household income distribution slide. I think maybe I'm not the only one here that found it shocking to learn that half of Temple City households are lower-income. At the bottom of the graph, it says the source is HUD CHAS 2012 to 2016. What is that, and do we know the methodology at which they arrived at that income distribution? Is it related to the census at all, or how, how is that data?
I have to say, Jen is probably the expert on that, so I'll have to defer to her.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. This is an interesting one. So Housing and Urban Development is the one that identifies the thresholds for the lower-income categories. And it's interesting in that in LA County, and this is done countywide, so it's not Temple City-specific, but in the thresholds for, for lower income, you do see that those are actually higher than the median income, so that is confusing. I think the number there for the median income is like 77,000, and I'm saying lower income is like the low 90s. HUD makes some adjustments based on areas with high housing costs and other factors that does make that kind of an anomaly. LA County is one of the cases where you have lower income thresholds lower than, or higher, excuse me, than, than the median. There are a couple other counties that have that as well, but LA County is one of those. So I'm hoping I'm not making it more confusing. Please let me know if you have a...
Yeah, I understand the, sort of the broad strokes that they take to determine the threshold, but specifically, the graph is presenting information as if, because there's a bar, that's, that blue bar, that's Temple City. And so somehow, someone is telling us that the data they have is we have 50% of our households are, are lower-income households. So I'm wondering, how is that derived? Because I think every time we go through the census data, and even when we went through the general plan update from five years ago, I don't recall these numbers being brought up. So I remember the general plan update also talked about income distribution, and I, I think, I believe those numbers were taken from the census. So to me, there's a, at least on paper, there seems to be an inconsistency between what HUD is telling us versus what information we may have in the past, so...
Yeah, I, I have the same question, but I'm wondering, is it, does it have anything to do with the fact that maybe in that 50% of low-income, it's because a large percentage of them are cost-burdened because of the prices of housing? Is that taken into effect? Because I was really surprised when I saw that 50%. So I'm just wondering, does that have anything to do with it, or is it part of the calculation?
You know, I'm thinking what might have more to do with it than that is the fact that we're more, Temple City, I believe, more of a bedroom community, where many of our households are four persons or more. And as a result of having more people in a household, your income level doesn't go as far where as if you had, let's say we were to change these numbers, and it was only two people in the household, then that would raise, I presume, what, where you would be as far as low or medium or, or whatever, because you're not spreading it around as much. So I, I don't know, I, I find these numbers hard to believe too, based on reality, but, but somebody sitting back there with a calculator that's not really looking at the, at the real, at the real thing. And, you know, all we hear now is that it's so expensive to buy property in Temple City. Somebody's buying it, and they have to be making pretty good money to live here, so...
So, yeah. Dave Bergman here, if I could just jump in real quick. I'm the director at LWC, work with Jen. Some confusion, and this happens inevitably when you use more than one data source. So HUD CHAS data comes from something that's the Comprehensive Housing Affordability Strategy Dataset. The dataset, if, you know, HUD makes some custom tabulations based on census data, but it's not interoperable with the basic census data like ACS. So most of the data that you're used to seeing and the data that we report in other parts of the housing element, because we get a package of what's called Safe Harbor or allowable data that comes to us through SCAG, that they've negotiated with HCD, that this is the dataset that every city within the SCAG region is going to use. And they settled on using the CHAS dataset for this measure as opposed to using the ACS data. So I realize it's a little bit confusing whenever you mix data sources. But I think the broader point for people to remember is that you may have a circumstance here where you have a population in Temple City that may be house wealthy and income poor. So these could be seniors who are on fixed incomes, who are incumbents, who are living in housing that's very expensive, right? So when you adjust their lower income for the expense of housing, which is what CHAS does, you're going to see more lower-income households, if that makes any sense. I realize it's a little bit confusing. Unfortunately, as consultants, in this case, our hands are a little bit tied because we need to use the Safe Harbor data. So I apologize for any confusion and, and the fact that the data is both older and not directly comparable with the data you'll see from the census.
I think that the reason that it stands out to us is because then as council members, we're thinking, well, maybe we're not doing enough for our community, for those people who are low-income, whether that be funding for after-school programs or what have you. I mean, I, I think that's why I took a look at that and was surprised because I never, when I look at those numbers, I'm thinking, well, then maybe we need to rethink about what we do with, you know, some funding.
And actually, thank, thank you, Dan. I appreciate the, the scenario you illustrated about income poor but house wealthy, house rich. That probably does describe a, a good number of our residents.
So they're cost-burdened, but they, they, they live in the city and probably a home that...
Well, that, that's what's kind of interesting, is this idea of cost-burden assumes that everyone is constantly paying a rent or mortgage. But what happens to the people who have already paid off their house? So do they suddenly, what category do they get placed in? And I don't want to point out any people, but I'm sure we all know people who have lived in Temple City for many years and have likely paid off their...
But the medium, medium area income, you know, AMI, is actually quite high. For four-person households, it's like 90,000, over 90,000, 1,000. That's, even at 80%, that's pretty high. So if somebody's already retired, paid off their house, it may not be as bad as we think.
Yeah, and I think that, that's why I wanted to bring up that question is because on the surface, I, I think it's a little misleading, but I, I understand that as consultants, they have to follow the metrics that, you know, HUD and SCAG have outlined. But I think it's important for at least us and anyone else to know the context of what this number actually means.
You know, I'm wondering, for purposes of this exercise, though, if this doesn't really work more to our benefit, showing that we're cost-burdened and that we're, we're lower. So standards coming from the state are going to be proportionately reduced, I would think, I would hope. I don't know.
Well, we have developed programs in the housing element that do reflect the specific needs of some of our community members. So for instance, what we found was that there's, in Temple City, the housing stock is older. There's seniors, a larger percentage of seniors in our community, and our seniors tend to be lower-income. So it's not surprising to see that we have more substandard housing than LA County as a whole. So we, that's why we are looking at policies in the, in the housing element to look at how do we provide for improvements to substandard housing. You know, that's why when we look at the CDBG program every year, we really try to focus on having home rehabilitation grants and loans and those types of things. So we've done a lot of work looking at...
So we've done a lot of work looking at these demographics and trying to fit programs that meet the demographics of our community.
Is substandard housing reflective of a certain area, or is it in comparison to the state or the county as a whole?
The term "substandard" has some requirements that we meet in order to determine whether it's substandard or not, and then we can compare that to both the SCAG region or the county and the state.
Would our substandard housing be the same as that in Northridge?
Yes.
Or, you know, someplace like that? How about PV?
Yeah, it's all the same kind of definition for substandard.
Okay, William, did you have?
Just one more question. Thank you. It's actually related to this, the cost-burden question that we brought up. I'm trying to understand, I think we had a table here?
The next page.
Oh, here it is, thank you. Yeah, the housing cost-burden slash overpayment slide. And so when I'm looking at this table, it says, correct me if I'm wrong, but it says fifteen percent of extremely low-income households are not cost-burdened. So I'm trying to understand what that actually means, because if you're looking at the county limits for, say, a four-person household, that's thirty-three thousand eight hundred a year. And then you divide that by twelve months, that's two thousand eight hundred a month, and you're saying less than thirty percent. So a household of four is paying a rent of eight hundred dollars a month.
Eight hundred?
Eight hundred forty-five. So I don't know how accurate that is. Like, how is that number derived?
I don't think that even exists.
Right, so I just want to make sure I'm understanding, is that what that table is saying, or is it actually, should we be interpreting that table differently?
You're reading the table correctly. That is saying that fifteen percent of extremely low-income households are not cost-burdened. They are not paying more than thirty percent of their income toward housing costs.
I'd like to know where those units are.
Yeah, so this, yeah, as David mentioned, this is through that pre-certified Safe Harbor data from HUD, yeah, Housing and Urban Development, so it is through their CHAZ survey.
Jen, so just if I can weigh in on that particular case, this also includes people living with family or relatives that may be paying a submarket rent, and there is an interesting story in there for Temple City, because you have a lot of intergenerational households. And that's going to make up a fair amount of that fifteen percent. So, yeah, there's, there's a lot of stuff that isn't immediately intuitive when you start getting into these housing cost data. I think an important top-line takeaway from here, though, is that it is increasingly difficult for families making good money, even by LA County standards, to find housing that costs less than thirty percent of their income in Temple City. But Temple City isn't alone in that regard.
Okay, that makes sense. And that, while you were speaking, you reminded me of when Scott, you had mentioned, we had done a survey of ADUs, and, you know, how much income are they collecting? And you said everyone responded with zero.
Yes, yeah.
So I guess that would be an example of someone falling into that category?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, all right.
Since you asked, I'm curious, is this table actually for Temple City, or is that just LA County as a whole? Is that specifically Temple City?
Yeah, this is for Temple City, and it's also, there's a more built-out table, Table A-13, that goes through even more detail than the one that's on the slide. And it's all Temple City-oriented.
Okay.
Okay.
I feel like I've been through a graduate class.
Housing? All right, if there's no other questions from council, I'm going to open the public hearing, and I have one speaker card, and that is Lexine? Is that how you pronounce it?
Lexine, yeah.
Lexine, come on, welcome.
So, good evening, Mayor, and, oh, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Lexine Lynn McKenzie, and I've been a resident of Temple City since 2005, also a proud graduate of Temple City High School. Over the past year, I've been working with a group of local residents who are concerned about housing justice issues in Temple City, and we've been following the housing element with interest. I do have some prepared remarks, but just a brief point of clarification on the CHAZ data, since that seems to be an issue of contention. That data is actually tabulated in custom tables that they request from the American, from the Census Bureau via the American Community Survey, the ACS. So essentially, census data is pre-split into certain categories, but you can request custom tables based on categories that might not come, which obviously aren't available to the public for privacy reasons, and that's where that data comes from. But back to my prepared remarks, so I'd like to start by commending the city's community development department on the work they've done to put together an HCD-compliant housing element. As mentioned, there will not be upzoning requirements, and I think that's very well done. And we are, as a group, excited about the steps that Temple City is taking to protect the rights of tenants and to ensure the benefits of living in Temple City, as Jen described, are accessible to a diverse range of families. As noted in the presentation, about fifty percent of Temple City's residents do fall into that extremely low, very low, or low-income category, and that's at the eighty percent or less, not the eighty to one-twenty, that includes the moderate category. In addition, in our meetings, some additional data, just to highlight for the council, about thirty-three percent of Temple City Unified District students are on free or reduced lunch, which is another, another way of gauging the income levels in the city. And I actually pulled TCUSD salaries to get a sense of the workforce, and forty-one percent of them would qualify for some form of low, extremely low, very low, moderate-income housing. So as you can see, this might not be what is traditionally thought of when you think of low-income housing. It's a very different, the way that the state defines it and the way that these programs define it are very different, and may actually be closer to a fit for Temple City than you might think. So with that in mind, we do recognize the steps Temple City has taken to address these issues in the housing element programs, such as the Housing Rehabilitation Program, the IHO study, which I was excited to see is moving forward with the SGB COG support, and we're looking forward to seeing these programs develop over the coming years. I do say I'm out of time, I just request a couple more minutes. We do want to put ourselves forth as a resource for the city, for the council, and for the community development department as a group of concerned residents, along with another group, the Temple City Coalition, which is doing existing work on unhoused individuals in Temple City. They're doing some great work every Sunday and every Thursday. I think there is a large component of Temple City, as I've seen even just on, say, the Temple City By Nothing Group or the Temple City Facebook Groups, we do have many in our community who are very caring and concerned about these issues, and I think, moving forward into the implementation stage of the housing element, these groups would be a great resource. So with that, thank you, and once again, great job to the community development department.
Thank you, Lexine. Okay, is there anyone else? Okay, going to close public hearing. Any final comments from council? None?
Well, I just want to kind of echo what our speaker here, I think, I want to comment, staff, comment, our consultant were doing a great job in meeting the state's housing element, and, you know, I know a lot of communities complain about these RIN numbers and relisting and all that, but, you know, as government, local governments, it's our job to make sure that we provide the basis for folks to actually build the housing. And I agree that, two observations that I made, and one was, I agree with the mayor and also council member, men that, realizing that quite a number of us in Temple City are not as well-off as we like. So the first thing that came to my mind when the mayor brought that up, and also council members brought up, was we had discussions when we talk about fees, we assess every year when we talk about fees, you know, I always immediately think of the park user fees and all the different programs that we have, maybe we need to take more of that into consideration. And secondly, as Director Reamer brought up, the DG, uh, DGB.
CB.
CBDG funding, you know, every year when we do housing rehab, you know, we never really, we basically used up all the funding that we have, but we might want to think of other ways that we can help of improving the housing stock. And the second observation I want to make was that, I know we talk about oftentimes the plan check, we, every time when we do our planning, zoning, upgrade, we always seem to increase our requirements. And I think Mr. Cook will remember me, because he and I have many conversations about this, of reducing the cost of housing. And one of that is to reduce the burden of getting plan checks, permits, inspections, making our work easier for folks to build, to rehab, and because at the end of the day, is the housing cost that we have some control over.
Sure, are you saying, don't do plan checks?
No, 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 streamline those.
Oh, okay.
Instead of making it overburdened.
You're a little scared there.
No, no, I don't mean that, I don't mean that. You know, like, you know, splitting hair between, you know, or, let's say, somebody built a fence that's forty-three inches, and even though the requirement's forty-two, and we ask them, go tear it out, because you exceeded it by an inch. You know, I, you know, I'm not saying that we're actually doing that, I'm just making that up as an example, you know, so we got, I think, or when we do our planning zoning regulations, some of it takes some of a PhD to read, and that might be not as easy for homeowners to add to their houses, so. That's all, thank you.
Mayor, if I could maybe segue from council member you's point. I think what council member you brought up, I mean, one of the programs is the objective design standards, right? So seems like that's a step in the right direction.
Yeah, absolutely.
And alluding to what you're talking about.
Right, making a code easy to read, and I think we're doing that already, so.
Yeah, and I'd go even further, I don't know what other people think about it, I'd go even further to say that there's elements of code enforcement that also fall line, fall along the lines of that. I mean, to me, there's a difference between code enforcement on things that is a building and safety or life safety issue versus something that's more aesthetic and, you know, not really a danger to someone. So we have heard, all of us have heard stories, anecdotal stories of residents saying, well, we got a code enforcement citation, and in order to mitigate it, it costs a lot. So to me, there is a, I think there is, there also needs to be some kind of discretion that staff and others can use in that sense. I know that's probably a separate topic, but I think in line, in line with, you know, what financial burden are we placing upon residents to actually mitigate and fix certain things? I think that that needs to be considered. And then lastly, I do want to say, and maybe Director Reamer's could confirm this for me, but really, a lot of what we're able to do to accommodate the RIN numbers wouldn't have been possible without the cross-road specific plan, right? So that was something we, as a city, adopted independent of the current circumstances. So this notion of allowing mixed-use zoning in our city, if you look at some other cities in the San Gabriel Valley or even the LA County region, you will see there is people fighting mixed-use development or fighting density in general, right? But I think our strategy makes sense for us, because we recognize the need to make that change, but we also accommodated and targeted and customized it specifically for our city. You know, we didn't say upzone all over and patchwork of, you know, zoning here, zoning there, we had a specific framework and design, and that's a lot of credit to our community development staff and consultants for really spearheading that a number of years ago.
Director Reamer, dude.
Yeah. So, I mean, we didn't know at that time, but it turned out to be kind of a boon for us when we're dealing with this. And as Jen mentioned earlier, we don't have the same challenges as some other cities, where they're struggling to make the RIN numbers work. Like, we have, we've demonstrated that capacity. So I'm proud of that work that we've spearheaded, so. And again, thank you for speaking and commending our staff, we are very proud of them as well. Appreciate you sharing.
Although I was waiting for the but.
It was all positive.
Yeah, it was, I was, that's kind of a shame sometimes, so thank you. You know, just to kind of follow up on your point, it's, you mentioned the fact that what we try to do is something, or we always try to do is what fits our community. Unfortunately, the state seems to be taking that more and more away from us, which is the bigger challenge right now, I think. And that's something that I know Scott has had his eyes on, and something that we'll try to continue to do, but, you know, I know that we, I hear complaints from our residents, and it's like, well, there's not much we can do since the state has mandated a lot of these things, so, you know, we'll just keep trying. Ready for motion? Oh, go ahead, no, you can do, you're the mayor, you can do it. I thought you were going to ask a motion.
No. I think it's really a good exercise, and I appreciate so much the questions from council, because it's a different idea, a different perspective when you look at the numbers done this way. But I think in talking to a lot of our legislatures, legislators, you know, in personal conversations about local control, and, you know, the belief in Sacramento is that communities, cities have not done enough with affordable housing and, you know, building more housing so that people can live in a community. And I think there's just not one answer to that, and I know that many cities, many councils, including in Temple City, in past, and we haven't really taken an in-depth look at how do we promote affordable housing and what programs are available. So I think this presents us with a unique opportunity, like the young lady said, to really look at a program, you know, not just put in on a shelf, but to look at why the state has taken so much control, because cities in general have done a really lousy job of promoting affordable housing, especially in areas like Temple City, or cities similar to Temple City where prices are high for housing and rents. And when you talk to residents about affordable housing, many are like, oh, no, that's going to change the whole landscape of my community. So I think a lot of it is so much aligned, the housing, the lack of housing, with homelessness too. And I think now it's coming together, where people are really becoming aware that homelessness is because there is a lack of affordable housing or housing in general. So I appreciate Scott so much the work that you've done, and I promise, as long as I'm on council, that I will do my best to kind of, you know, look out for affordable housing opportunities that fit within our community, and not everything is going to be the perfect fit, but I think it's an obligation that we have to do. So very much appreciate the work from the consultants and staff, thank you for that, and we're going to do it.
If I may, really quick, I've been able to stand at the microphone all night and talk.
talk to you, but Hestie Lu was the project manager, and I've stepped on her toes the whole time, but I just wanted to thank her for her work for the last two years.
She looked pretty, you know, and she she has so much to offer, so Hestie.
Thank you, Hestie.
Your turn. Do you wanna?
Oh, no, uh thank you, City Council, thank you, uh CDD Director for the compliment. It's been my pleasure working with the consultant, and we've come far to now to this point, and I thank you for everybody in this effort of developing this document, thank you.
Thank you, Hestie, for all your hard work with that. Okay, so we're gonna move on to item nine unfinished.
I think we did a mayor, I think I would, if it's okay, I would like to make a motion to adopt the resolution approving the addendum to the midcent- mid-century general plan, uh EIR, uh environment impact report, amended general plan by adopting the proposed housing element twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-nine to replace the current housing element twenty thirteen to twenty twenty-one, and authorize the city manager his destiny to make technical changes and other non-substantive edits that may result from the review of department housing and community development without further consideration or read read adoption by the city council.
Second.
Second, okay, any objections? Roll call.
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Proten Man?
Yes.
Mayor Sternquist.
Yes, um Scott, I just want to share, you probably know this, but LA County at, I guess, you know, one of the the thing that cog had been asking, the San Gabriel Valley cog had been asking of the county is to, you know, you have all these things that we need to do for housing, but can you offer some help? So there are some landlord and tenant programs, you don't have to reinvent the the will, that are already available and they offer them frequently. So I just wanted to say, I recently received something in the mail as a landlord, if I was interested, so I don't know if they're going out en masse or what, but there are some things available through the county.
Thank you, we'll keep an eye out.
Okay. All right, nine unfinished business, none new business, council chambers and computer room equipment upgrade, and our city clerk is going to make this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, thank you. Um just want to point out that the description on the agenda for this item is incorrect, so if you would allow me to make the presentation. As provided in the staff report, um the audio, video, and computer equipment in the council chambers and the computer room has not been updated since the remodel of this room in two thousand thirteen. Um the council chamber audio is an older analog system.
Okay, you want to move it up a little bit? There you go.
Dating back to late nineteen nineties and early two thousands, which does not allow for easy mixing during the meetings and does not offer a way for staff in the chamber to make any adjustments to the sound for this for the dais, podium, and audience. Current setup also does not have a wireless microphone or assistive listening for the hearing impaired. The audio system upgrade will give staff and consultant more control for adjusting the sound of the speakers. We also recommend having an assistive listening system and wireless microphone for meetings and training purposes. The current design of the council chamber video presentation allows staff to project slides during the meetings, however, the projectors were installed without the capability of a HD resolution and have a low light output, making it difficult for council and audience to read the information on the slides. Staff is proposing upgrading the projectors and placing monitors in front of each seat at the dais and two screen mounted to both walls on both sides of the council chamber um for to enhance the po- uh council and public's view of the presentations, and then adding a matrix switcher um to be installed in the computer room to allow the control of the video signals. And going forth with the hybrid meetings and planning for the future, staff is recommending upgrades to the computer room equipment and computers, um adding battery backups to protect the computers from power outages and issues, additional memories for the computer, and larger monitors for the video control software to give the operator better viewing of each camera and, excuse me, graphics. Staff would also like to take this opportunity to upgrade the current broadcast server for scheduling and broadcasting meetings to the city's cable channel. There is currently no bulletin board software or s- uh system in place, and over the years we've had experienced issues with the current server, including hard drive failure and software glitches, and we need to upgrade so that we can update the broadcast information slides both on a regular basis and also in case of emergencies if needed. And lastly, staff is proposing the purchase of affordable audio system for meetings and trainings in the council chambers. Uh having similar components as to what is to be installed inside the chamber would give staff the ease of connectivity or connecting directly to the install audio system inside the chamber and allow the use of the PA system for any off-site meetings as well. So in conclusion, staff is requesting council to consider approval of a consultant services agreement with Red Eighty-Eight Media for design and installation services for the council chamber and council chamber computer room equipment upgrade, authorize city manager to sign the consultant services agreement, approve the purchase of the equipment to upgrade and enhance the quality of audio and video in the council chambers and council chamber computer room, and approve expenditure budget amendment uh from the unassigned general fund for this project.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Mayor Sternquist, just one one other item, um even though that's what we're asking for today, we may try to look for this towards ARPA funding, and I will provide you as we as we go through kind of the tallies of where we are with ARPA funding as well. We you did approve some, you did approve two projects, the Trellis project and the playgrounds, we don't have numbers on those yet, but we will provide that as kind of an ongoing tally as we go through the process appropriations.
Okay, all right. Do we have any questions from council?
I just have one question on on the computer monitors, my understanding is there are two on each side of the walls, would there be still monitors up here? So all if I were audience, where I would I be, just have to turn away from the dais and look on the sidewalk instead of looking forward?
I believe we are keeping these two, these would just be two additional as well, is that correct?
And then there'll be a new projector?
Yes.
Hmm. Cause I don't see too many projectors these days. I think most of the time it's monitors now.
I'd have to defer to Red Eighty-Eight, but I'm maybe just quote.
It's not for me to direct or anything, I'm just asking, I just want to make sure this audience still can.
Yes.
View forward, that's all.
Absolutely. We'll we'll still be, we will still have the screens with some level of either projection or or experience so that they they can see the presentations and everything else, that's correct, correct?
Where would the other monitors be?
So in front of the council, uh you're talking about the monitors, it would be on on each of these walls, one on each.
So facing the audience, so like at an angle?
So the audience could either face this way to look at the presentation, or this this side could face that way, or they could look to the front.
All right, I guess, so those who can't see all the way up here, because it can't be kind of far if it's in the back.
Oh, yeah, I I think the side ones are fine.
What about, is there gonna be something out in the lobby? Don't we have a monitor out there right now?
Yeah, there's currently a monitor out there, there's no plan to remove that one.
There's no what?
No plans to remove that that monitor.
So that'll stay, but it'll be connected to those systems, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions?
That's all, thanks.
I don't have any.
I have a quick question. Um when it says low-profile dais monitor, what what exactly does that look like?
So staff had discussed with the consultant a possibility of adding a monitor in front of uh council dais so that you could have, you could view the presentation rather than having to turn your head behind you or having to uh look elsewhere uh for the presentation. So we're proposing a twenty-two-inch um monitor in front of each of you so that you could view the presentation.
Well, ready?
Cause a a twenty-two-inch would, would that kind of block our view of the audience or is it?
We would be able to tilt the monitor so that it would not hinder or impede your view of the public or the public view of council.
It's not that much.
So it would be tilted.
I think this is twenty-two inches.
This is twenty-two?
Yeah, it doesn't block anyway.
Oh, okay, all right. For some reason I was imagining something larger.
A forty-inch screen, although that'd be nice.
Well, I'm thinking like Peggy Peggy's screen is probably, what, twenty?
That's a twenty-four.
It's a month.
We have twenty-two inch at Foothill Transit, but this is a little bit lower in front of um.
And it works fine.
It works fine.
It'll probably be adjustable, you can lower.
Sure, sure, okay.
The monitor would be tilted such that you are not going to be blocked from the the public's view.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Will we be able to control those monitors or no? Like change the page or anything?
It's only for viewing, so.
So it's just for viewing?
We'll probably still end up using our computers.
So we'll still need our computers.
I still I'll still be using my.
Or God forbid, paper.
Yeah.
What is that? I don't remember.
Okay, um no open public comment, any comments, Jerry?
Good evening, Jerry Jambezen, I have a question, is there a thought of having a monitor back here also? I'm thinking of the times when there was cert training here and other training, that it was difficult for the presenter always having to look around to see what was on the screen as he was presenting. So I'm just wondering if there's something that could be put back there underneath the clock as a monitor also, so thanks for your consideration.
Anyone else? Right, closed public comment, any final comments from council? Okay, can we get a motion?
Mayor, I'd make a motion that we approve a consultant services agreement per attachment A, staff report with Red Eighty-Eight Media for design installation services for the council chamber and council chambers computer room equipment upgrade in an amount not to exceed twenty-four thousand nine hundred dollars. We further authorize city managers to sign the consultant services agreement as stated with Red Eighty-Eight Media, uh approve the purchase of equipment to upgrade and enhance quality of audio and video in the council chambers and council chambers computer room in an amount not to exceed seventy-four thousand five hundred dollars, and approve a total expenditure budget of amendment of ninety-nine thousand four hundred dollars from the unassigned general fund.
Second.
Okay, if no objection, roll call please.
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Proten Man?
Yes.
Mayor Sternquist.
Yes, just one last question, Brian, will they be able to get those charger things to work?
We'll we'll take a look at the all entire electrical panel and everything that's there, so you have some more functionality as well up up here, so, yes.
Actually, a follow-up to your question, I've noticed people who come up to public comment always have trouble with that mic, is there a way to make that?
We're we're gonna take a look at all the mics across the entire sound system because as you can as you can even hear today, it's kind of.
Yeah, it's all it's all interconnected.
Yeah, it's all interconnected, and we have some functionality issues even that you're hearing this this evening that uh we hope to address with all that.
We're really getting into the weeds tonight. Just a passing comment.
All right, we move to item B, process regarding no front plate warning. In order to provide a better opportunity to remediate violations prior to fines being issued, city staff has prepared an option for the development and implementation of a front plate violation warning process. City manager, Brian?
Thank you, Mayor Sternquist, and members of the council, this item is being brought forward to you tonight, over the last, I would say about a month and a half or so, I have been receiving complaints about the issue of uh enforcing the vehicle code related to front license plates, and I'll let the city attorney talk to you about the changes that happened. But generally, when we're talking about vehicle code violations related to our enforcement, we're looking at the nexus of what our general quality of life issues are in that enforcement. But one thing I do want to point out, and I'm sorry I did not point this out, in the second page of the staff report, it speaks about the violations of the vehicle code may be deemed by the city to be correctable, that is actually our practice. So for this, for the enforcement of this regular of the of this part of the vehicle code, um we actually do consider it uh within that twenty-one day period that you can fix that ticket and be and 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 have that fee reduced. Um so just I just wanted, it there was a little bit of confusion about that, if we if we do that now or are if we planned on doing it, but that's that is our practice thus far, so I'm not gonna use the word fixing, I don't want to use confuse the word fix-it ticket, but we are treating it like a fix-it ticket.
Brian, I'm confused, so that's in place now?
That's in place now, ma'am, yes.
We already have that in place?
Yes, we already have that in place.
Is that somewhere where the people who get tickets can read it or see?
Um I'll I'll let Mr. Azumi, who oversees the program, kind of just touch base on that real quick.
Yeah, so that information on a correctable violation is listed on the back of each ticket that is issued, whether it's a handwritten ticket or an electronic printed ticket, it is available on there. It also, I believe, is available on our city's website under correctable violations on how they can correct those as well.
So I think there's been, because I've received quite a few of those complaints, if you will, and I think um one in particular stemmed from a a young woman who actually got three tickets in a in a month. One was by error because she parked her vehicle while charging and then got two license plate, front license plate violations, but she has no place to put a license plate on that vehicle, it's an electric vehicle and there's no license plate holder.
The Tesla?
No, I don't know what it's called, it's a small.
They, most of them don't have that, but they have a process where you can put it on, there's there's no there are no holes dri- drilled drilled into the front bumper.
So you have to take it to?
But no, you just, like, for example, on James Tesla, it's 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 a, then you just stick on the front. They do, they do issue two plates for Teslas, they don't just issue one because there's no place to put the.
Right, right.
So it's no different.
Okay, so on the back of a ticket, their their ticket, it would say, they can fix this and bring it in to ci- do they take it to city hall or what do they?
Correct, so the procedure to correct a correctable violation is within twenty-one days from the date the citation is issued, they must have that correction completed, so in this case, if it's a ticket for no front license plate, they must affix the license plate to the front of the vehicle as required by the California Vehicle Code and states how it should be affixed to the vehicle. It can be inspected by city staff, or it can be inspected by a law enforcement agency or the DMV. Once inspected, uh the agencies may charge a fee for that inspection service. After it's inspected, then they have to return the citation with a ten-dollar reduced fee uh for payment of that violation. If they come to Temple City, we charge a ten-dollar inspection fee and the ten-dollar which is required by the vehicle code uh for that reduced fine.
And can they, since it takes four to eight weeks to get a hard license plate, does do you, can they put a paper license plate in the meantime, or what do they do?
No, it has to be the license plate, and so DMV does issue plates over the counter, uh so does AAA.
Not the metal plates, you have to go and surrender, she can go surrender the plates and they set four to.
I've replaced plates on my son's car and I've received them.
I've done the same thing, go right in.
They gave it to you that day?
I go into AAA, they give it to you right then?
Right at the counter.
Huh, she went to DMV in El Monte.
So how did you? Oh, that explains it. How did you attach it to the car? Blow it out? Huh? How did you attach it to the car?
The, they give you a, on the Tesla? Yeah, they give you a um a thing where you, it's like a like a two-way tape kind of thing where you just put it on the front, there it is.
Yeah, so manufacturers.
So it stays permanently?
Oh, yeah, it stayed so far.
Wow.
That's all Teslas, yeah, or if you want to get, if you're not comfortable with that, you can take it to your mechanic and have him drill a couple holes in it.
I think Jones' car is the same way, I've never even looked.
Yeah, it's just stuck on there.
Yeah, so manufacturers do have license plate brackets that they can, I guess, add as an addition to that, and and like uh Mayor, uh not Mayor Chavez, uh Councilmember Chavez stated, the other way is just the old-school self-tapping screws and straight into the bumper.
So then it seems like we don't need to do anything if we already have something in place that gives them the opportunity to fix it within twenty-one days, right?
Let me let me ask this real question, if you don't mind. So my understanding of reading the staff report is that it's a fifty-five-dollar ticket, correct?
Correct.
However, if you put the license plate on within twenty-one days, come back to city hall, show proof that it's on, then basically that reduces the the, for want of a better term, the fine from fifty-five to twenty dollars.
It's actually reduces it to ten.
Ten.
We charge a ten-dollar inspection.
Okay, well, that's what I mean, but total. Okay, well, that's what I mean, but the total out of pocket is twenty bucks. Rather than fifty bucks.
If, if they inspect it, uh, I know C H P may charge fifteen or twenty dollars for an inspection.
Yeah.
They still come over here, pay the ten, and so in that case, they'd be out of pocket thirty dollars.
But on the ticket, it's already informs them that they can come to city hall.
Correct.
Yeah, it's already there.
And what does the inspection consist of?
It's staff going out and physically looking at the vehicle, making sure that the license plates front and back match and that it is affixed to the vehicle, they're not gonna tug at it or do anything, uh, they just need to.
I'm just curious, but does the city really need to charge an inspection fee for something that, I mean, is?
That's your choice in terms of the, if that's something you wanna, you, you do that in your fee and fine schedule every year? If that's an item that, for, in terms of something that you wanna provide as a service to the public that you could, you could, I, we could come back with a revised fine and fee schedule that reduces it.
Well, we can look at it then, Brian, but.
No problem.
It seems since that twenty-one day thing is in place, right?
Yes.
That pretty much solves the problem.
Well, it always has been, that's also in the vehicle code, I believe. It is, it is basically allows you to correct it.
And, and I think what happened in particular in a few cases, because it seemed to be the neighbors all in that area, there were a few, um, was that there was, I guess, for her, it was, she, since she had already gotten two others in a haste to pay them right away, I don't think anybody takes the time to read the whole back of the, you know.
I, I spoke, I spoke with several of them.
Yeah, the ticket and it's whatever, but I mean, it's, since it's there, we give them that opportunity to do it. I, I'm just very curious about the process, I know if you go online, because I wanted to check myself, it said, I mean, it is a, a longer period of time, you're not, obviously not gonna get the license plates that day. So, when I, I'm, what do we do for the people who apply for the licenses online? Who can't physically go to D M B and get it that day?
Yeah, so we still hold to the twenty-one days, it's a twenty-one days to pay, contest or correct, and so.
Can they bring proof that they purchased the license plates online?
We don't accept anything unless it's been affixed to the vehicle, so the, the violation has to be corrected, so the license plate has to be affixed to the vehicle.
So they can still bring it in though, I mean, but it might not, well, that, that's the question. What if you cannot bring the vehicle in to be checked and you have passed the twenty-one days because you haven't gotten the license in the mail?
Then they can no longer correct it and they could either contest it if it's still contestable or they must pay the citation in full.
Well, that's the part that doesn't seem convenient or.
Well, that's.
We're talking about convenience or doing what you're supposed to be doing? There's two different things, I mean, yeah, if somebody gets a thing and then, eh, I'll get to it when I get to it and then they've got three days left before the time and they go to D M B or whatever and there's a long line, they say, well, I'm not gonna wait in that line.
No, but what if you cannot drive that vehicle? Until you get the.
Well, what do you mean? Well, I'm assuming they're driving that vehicle, that's why they get the ticket.
No, the tickets for being parked, they're parked tickets. The cars were cited because they were parked and did not have a front license.
So what you're saying is they, they physically cannot drive the car?
Yes.
I don't think you need to actually take the car in to get the plate.
That's what I'm saying, but if you cannot drive the car, you have to apply online to get the plate, to park your car in front of the, where you live.
Or I suppose get a ride from your good buddy to take you there.
Yeah, I mean, you could do that, but I'm just saying.
Why, why, why can't you drive the car?
I don't.
If the vehicle's not drivable and it's deemed inoperable, it cannot operate.
It's not the car that's not drivable, it's the person that cannot drive the car.
Well.
For a medical condition. But the car is parked there without the license.
Well, we're throwing all kinds of stuff into it now, I mean, so they have a medical condition, they can't drive the car.
Anyway, let's, let's just move on, because it, it is a problem and there are situations, but I don't wanna get into the situations because it's, HIPAA laws and I, protecting people's privacy, but there are situations where someone cannot drive the car, but they have to park the car on the street and there's no license plate at the front license, in the front license.
I don't think there's any requirement that the person who receives the ticket has to be the one to actually physically go to D M B or to, or to AAA and actually get the replacement.
Can I sign you up to do it for them?
Yeah.
If I had time, I would, but I'd charge more than twenty bucks.
And likewise, we don't require that the vehicle owner be the one that bring the vehicle for inspection. So if someone was physically unable to drive a vehicle and there was someone that can assist them.
Anybody can bring the.
Anybody can bring that vehicle in to have it inspected, as long as they have the proper documentation.
Just the license plate?
License plate and like vehicle registration and that we can inspect the vehicle.
Okay.
Hey, I, Greg, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that twenty-one days doesn't come from us, I think that's in the California Vehicle Code, I believe, isn't it?
That's correct, yes.
Yeah, that's, that's the California Vehicle Code, we just are consistent with that, so.
So I, I think one of the, the secondary question was, Brian, that you posed in, in the staff report was that, do we wanna make license plates a priority, right? Front, front, what do you call them, front license plate a priority for our code enforcement's officers to be looking at? How, how did you word it exactly, I'm sorry?
I know, I, I think what is, I don't wanna speak for you, but my understanding was it never really has been a high priority item either for us or for the sheriff for that matter. Usually it seems to me that most people who get these type of tickets are being cited for something else and then all this, then the officer will say, well, you don't have a front license plate, so let's just add that to the list. That seems to be the way things, again, that, based on my experience in, in talking with people who've gotten these type of tickets, it's just not for that, now, it could be, there's no question that it is, it is a, it is a moving, I think it's a moving violation, so.
If it's parked, it's a moving violation.
They could technically, the sheriff or our patrols can pull somebody for not having a front license plate. And again, remember, you know, I was reading up some articles, you know, the pluses and minuses. The article I read said that most people, the top reason most people don't apply the front license plate is basically for looks. They don't like the way it looks on the front of, of the car. However, the top reason that it should be there is to assist law enforcement to better identify the vehicle if it has been involved in some criminal activity. I mean, there's a reason for it to be there, so, uh, you know, it's, it, the law itself makes sense.
But I think, Tom, these were in particular parked vehicles.
Whatever vehicles, yeah, I mean, it, it doesn't differentiate between whether it was parked or whether it was driving.
Is it still considered a moving violation?
Well, I don't know if I use that term correctly, I'll.
No, it's, it's not a moving violation.
It, it's a violation of the California Vehicle Code, whether it's moving or parked.
It's more than an infraction though, I don't think it's an infraction. Is it, is it infraction or is it a?
It is an infraction.
It can be treated as, if, if pulled over, it's treated as an infraction.
Alright.
And if it's parked, it's not?
If it's parked, it's a parking citation, which is not an infraction.
All right, well, anyone have a question?
I do, I do have a question, I think I read the staff report. I think it's just for information, it's not the, I don't think city manager's asking us for an action because there's no, it was just an information item.
Well, if we wanna take action though, I think, if we wanna change.
Yeah, it was.
Right.
My, my concern about this is that, one of the things we're forgetting also here is that the inconsistency that would occur if we do modify this in some way, because this is not, this is only as far as the city staff is concerned, this has no bearing on what the sheriff is gonna be doing. The sheriffs are bound to enforce the law under the California Vehicle Code. They're not gonna say, well, we're gonna warn you this time, you know, you're gonna get a ticket from the sheriff, so.
Is it a ticket or is it a, uh, re, take it in and bring it back?
Ma'am, it's both ways too, we can actually write, ask the parking.
Francis, do you mind, thank you.
Yeah, so deputies can write a moving violation, which is an infraction for a front plate violation, or they also have the authority to issue parking citations. And so either way, uh, both the moving violation or a parking citation, they are correctable violations. They go through the same process and get the same inspections.
So do the, does the sheriff and the city know that if, so technically they, you can give a ticket that afternoon and you could give a ticket that afternoon for the same violation?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, it, it can?
Because ours is different, ours is gonna be a moving, it would be an actual violation for us. It's actually worse if you get a ticket from us.
And also, I think it's more expensive if they get the ticket from you.
Yes, sir.
I believe it's a hundred and seventy-nine dollars versus fifty-five dollars.
No, sir, you would actually, the courts have to have their fee, the correction fees and everything else as well, but it is not, it's a correctable offense, you don't have to go to the court. But they do do the process of the twenty-five dollars to, to process it and then the correction, another cost for the correction as well. So there is still a court fee for it.
It's easier to have it on there.
I think so. Okay.
Sorry.
Well, I just want the public to know, you, if you don't have a front license plate, you have twenty-one days if the city gives you that citation.
Yes, ma'am.
To bring in proof, correct, Brian? That you have, or you have to have someone physically bring the car, it could be anybody, to inspect your vehicle and that's a ten dollar service charge, correct?
Correct, and then ten dollar reduced penalty. So total, total would be twenty dollars, ten for the inspection and ten dollars what the vehicle code requires for the reduced fine.
And it sounds like if we're concerned about maybe that might be too much, we can always address that issue when we look at the fee schedule.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's fine, I just wanted to make that clear.
We couldn't settle that now? No, it's not.
Not tonight, not tonight, sorry.
Cause I know she's watching and I wanna make sure.
Stephanie would be all over you if you tried to do that.
I'd be in big trouble.
And if you don't get your license plate put on within the twenty-one days and bring it to the city and they've issued it, then.
I think there's a question, what, anytime any car is sold, there's always gonna be two license plate issued, either a temporary plate or a, a regular plate, a temporary plate until you get your actual physical plate, but they're always gonna give you two plates to put on. So that's why I think there's some kind of correction.
When you buy a new car now, they do give you those two, two paper plates.
Yes.
Two paper plates.
Yeah, the dealers are required to affix those on the vehicle before they drive off the lot.
So can they put a temporary paper plate while it's being?
And that would be considered.
So that you don't, so that the, then the sheriffs don't give them another ticket?
That'd be sufficient for it, and it's a temporary for approximately three months and then a plate will actually be sent to you from the D M B or anywhere else.
So, so Mayor Sternquist, I wanna make sure that there's no confusion, the temporary plate is only at the time of a vehicle is purchased from a dealer and that is only good for the initial ninety days after purchase. So if someone misplaces or loses their permanent plate, they do not get a temporary plate.
So what, what should someone do if you buy a car and the dealer only gives you one paper plate?
They are required by law to give you two.
So if they didn't do it, what, what should?
Go, go back to the dealership and request that second plate. Even if you have the temporary plates that are on the vehicle and for whatever reason they get shredded or destroyed, you are under California law to go back to that dealership if it's within that ninety days to request a replacement temporary plate.
Is a dealer obligated to pay for the modifications to your car?
Oh, they, they just print them, or as far as the.
No, no, I meant the permanent fixture, cause some cars don't even have the apparatus to affix a front plate.
Yeah, they may sell you a license plate bracket or mount, uh, kind of upsell some of their equipment to it.
I think with the Tesla, since there's no place, there's no holder on the front before you get the real regular plate, I believe they put that front paper plate in the, uh, on the dashboard.
Yeah, dashboard's not a.
But I don't think that's, that's where they put it.
Doesn't meet vehicle code requirement.
Doesn't count?
No. But, but do you have to pay separately for Tesla to install the permanent brackets?
No, they give you the apparatus to do it yourself.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's.
No, sir, actually, you can ask them to put it on for you, they just.
Yeah, they will.
They, if you want them to put it, they will ask, they're by legal law, they are supposed to mount it for you.
Okay, yeah, cause I, I'm saying that because that actually happened to me. Then, I, I never knew about this front license plate thing until this came up.
Yes.
You know, here's the problem with all of this.
I think there's a lot of people who don't know.
Yeah, this is, this is news to me.
I can tell, guarantee you that if you go into courts and tell the judge, I didn't know that was the law, what do you think they're gonna tell you?
If I get a nice judge, he's gonna say, oh, okay, go fix it.
No, they're gonna say, well, I'm sorry, but pay, pay the money.
Yeah, no, I'm not.
What is that whole thing ignorant to the law?
Yeah, but I, I would, I would, I would say, you know, to Mayor Sternquist's point, I, I would hope that this is not something we're actively going after, because it just seems, in my mind, kind of a unnecessarily silly thing to give people pressure about.
Well, you could say the same argument about, um, tinted wi, tinted windows, um, what's another one besides tinted windows? You know, people, that people do that.
But, but Tom, look at this, she got two.
Hanging things from the mirror?
Yeah, hanging things from the rearview mirror.
She got two tickets for the same thing.
No, I understand, there are, there are always circumstances.
Wait, for the same violation, two tickets from the city of Temple City for the same not having a front license plate within two weeks or three weeks, whatever the time, so.
Well, that makes a difference, if it was two or three weeks, if it was three weeks, then she should've had it taken care of by that time.
Well, she's the one that doesn't have a holder, so she would have to take the car to, to get it, so, I mean, but anyway. It makes that seem that we're not, maybe, uh, uh, the next, the second time would've been a nice notice, like, did, did you maybe not read the back that says you have twenty-one days to fix it or something? Maybe people just don't take the time, we had the same issue with licensing for pets and the city helped make the printing bigger in the back of it because people were, do you recall that, Brian? You actually worked on that.
I do.
Because it was the same complaints from many people about not being able to read the tiny print on the back and even realizing that they did have the opportunity to fix something.
Was this on, on your block also?
No, it was actually on a street, I think it's called Fratus.
So while we're on this topic, let me ask one more question. If some, if someone was parked on their driveway without a front plate, can you give them a ticket?
No.
Has to be on the street?
It has to be on public property, so either the street or a public parking lot. In private property with public access, like the shopping centers, anywhere that there is public access and California vehicle can be enforced, these are violations that can be enforced as part of that.
Okay, thank you.
Do we keep track of when we give a, let's say we give a citation for not having a front license plate? And let's say we issue that today and then the same officer comes upon the same car a week later, still no life, front license plate. Is there a way for them to check to see if they've already been cited for that? And, cause I would presume that you're still within that twenty-one day grace period, so it would maybe make sense at that point not to give another ticket, but, or do they check that or?
Yeah, so the answer is yes and no.
Okay.
Uh, if it's a manual site, a handwritten site, there, there's no way to check that other than physically being in front of a computer and pulling up the, uh, information in the database. On the electronic ticket writers, uh, it downloads the history of the site, the vehicle being cited, so it will show any warnings or any previous citations issued and what the violations were.
Which ones do we use here in the city?
We use both, but primarily our officers are using the handheld units.
How can we don't use just one system, Brian?
Oh, it's all one system.
Well, I mean, handheld or electronic, that's two different.
Well, handheld is electronic. The other one is the paper site, so we don't rely a hundred percent on technology, we have redundant systems. We have deputies and other personnel that write tickets that we're not gonna buy a five thousand dollar handheld ticket writer to give to the deputies, cause they rotate, uh, through patrol. So deputies, if they were to write citations, they're gonna write paper citations, pen and paper.
But generally, in our enforcement activities or in corrections, it's the electronic devices that we use, so that's something we do kind of can check.
So in these cases, someone just didn't cross-reference since they were electronic? Since they were given a second ticket within the twenty-one days?
Well, we don't know that for sure.
Well, the twenty-one days is not a grace period, twenty-one days is correct. So a violation, uh, for parking can be cited each and every day the violation exists.
Okay, so maybe that's the part we need to talk about and, and fix. Because if you're gonna cite our residents every single day while they're in the process of getting their front license plate, I think it's extremely unfortunate.
Yeah, we don't cite daily for.
But you just said, you can cite daily.
A violation exists each day, it can be cited, that is not the practice that we.
No, I mean, I think all of us understand that.
Yeah, but that is not the practice that we do.
Well, Mayor, may I ask a question, is that something that I think to, uh, the Mayor Potem's point, is that something that our co-parking officers should be focusing on is people's license plates or focusing on illegal parking?
That is, that, our, our, our illegal parking, our overnight parking program, um, is our primary, is our primary focus point. Our street sweeping is our primary focus point, this is, this is on the low end of priorities in terms of, in terms of enforcement.
And I think there's.
Or if I may suggest, then, I, I mean, I talked to you before about improving cities' general public safety and having our staff be the eyes and ears of, of the city, even though looking out for maintenance items may, may not be. and having our staff be the eyes and ears of of the city, even though looking out for maintenance items may or may not be, but, you know, we're so focused on front license plate, then perhaps we should look for other things that might be more beneficial. I'm, I'm not, I'm just suggesting, I'm not...
No, I think that's a good suggestion, and I think my frustration has come because, like, like you all know, when you're the mayor and people get frustrated, they reach out to, usually they, I'm hopeful that they copy all of you, but I know that sometimes...
It's just not the mayor, because a lot of people think I'm still the mayor.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying. I'm saying, you know, I'm hop- I'm hoping that they...
And Fernando, well, not Fernando.
No, I get it, yeah.
I just can't...
Yeah, most of the emails I see they have copied, but if you're at the market and you're anyplace in Temple City, they'll, they let you know. And I think the frustration, especially if if I could just use Yanni as an example, I think we need to put, to educate our code enforcement officers, and I would suggest maybe more training, more communication, um, between Brian, you know, when, when we give you those, because I always tell you first, and then, you know, you communicate to Brian and your staff, but I would hope that there's more communication. And the reason this was so frustrating for this particular resident was she parked her EV car in the Primrose parking area a few days after we approved it. And she got a ticket th- a few days later for leaving her car unattended, but she lives around the corner, so she left her, her car being charged and she got a citation. I called up Brian, Brian helped take care of that situation because it was a mistake, but there were quite a few other people who got tickets for leaving their vehicle unattended in the parking lot after ten PM. But we have changed that ordinance. So that's what I mean about education. Let's not get our residents frustrated when, when we try and do something that's going to improve their quality of life, and then they have to go through the process of, you know, getting a ticket and and the whole bit and complaining to City Hall.
Do we know how long that young lady has owned that vehicle?
Um, I don't know.
So let's assume that she bought it, unless she bought it twenty-one days before that, she's probably owned that vehicle for for some time, but yet had never taken the time to comply with the law and put the front license plate on there.
Well, I know she did buy the car used, and I don't know if it's a requirement to, when you buy a used car...
Yeah, at any time. Every car, doesn't matter if it was bought, used or new, needs two license plates.
Do you get, do you automatically get the two license plate from the previous owner?
Well, I guess that the previous owner has it, but when you buy it, it, now that the owner's, turns to you, not the previous owner, you're, the previous owner isn't going to get the ticket for not having two license plates.
No, exactly, but I'm saying that's where the frustration, so she basically got three tickets in two weeks. One, which was a mistake on the city part, because we approved that you could park there and we never said you had to stay in your vehicle.
Well, that, that was, that was a mistake, but not, not the license...
No, no, I'm not saying that the other two, I'm, I'm speaking to her frustration, that then she got one for not having a license plate, and then within a very short amount of time got a second one from the same officer, she says, I don't know for sure, I gave Brian the the number, for not having the license plate again. So that's what I'm saying. Are we not out looking at other things if we can give so many tickets in a short amount of time for front license plates?
I I would guess that that's not a common practice. Of course, things like that are going to happen, but have we received similar complaints from others that have gotten the same type of...
I I received some, I received some. If I may respectfully ask, I I think, like, I I've heard from the council in terms of, like, uh, from a priority standpoint, we have this, um, I I kind of understand where you're coming from, and we've talked about this being a low priority issue, very low priority issue for the city. I think the clarification, if I, if I made the clarification of twenty-one days has helped. I'll talk with, I'll talk with staff as well about that, about that time period, and I think, I do think I have enough sense of the feedback from tonight, if with, though action from the council, if that's, that's my, if that's my correct reading.
Right, that's fine, right?
Yeah, you know, my, my first reading on this whole thing, just, I understand the frustration, and and we all get that, too, I mean, when something like this happens, but I think whenever we start modifying or changing laws, um, especially this which is codified in our state vehicle code, we kind of enter a sort of a slippery slope type of situation where, okay, well, if we're going to do it for this, why aren't we doing it for that? And all of a sudden, we've got all of these things starting to come at us, and now it's like, okay, well, yeah, that makes sense, we'll give you a warning for this or that. You know, I I think the the gist of this is that people just have to understand, when they get a ticket for whatever it is, read the ticket and understand what it says, and if you can't read the back of it, get somebody who can. Um, I don't think they're, Brian, I, I don't think they're that bad. Are they, are they tiny, tiny re- writing on the back of that ticket? I mean, can you read it?
It can be small depending on it, but that's why we do have it available on the website as well in in bigger text.
Yeah, so I mean, it's available there, so...
And we could all, and we can always look in terms of, and just, I'll, I'll make this final point, we can always look for better outreach as well and better education.
I think that's the key, and that's always what was hoped that would change, not that we changed an ordinance.
Understood.
Not, you know, I think you're preaching to the choir, Tom, about that.
Well, or or maybe, maybe one of the things we could do is maybe highlight that twenty-one days on the back.
Something.
Because I've seen those on the back where it says, they they put it in bold or, like, twenty-one days, you can't miss that, you know? Maybe a little better writing or some, I mean, there are ways if if to to address that.
And you know, unfortunately, when she called and the others, I, you know, didn't, I had Brian call them back, but I said, let me find out what's going on. I never said read the back of the ticket, and so when I called City Hall, they basically said, well, you know, she has to pay the ticket because this is what the thing is. And so I said, there's no means for someone to get notified, and there was like, well, that's why we're going to bring it in front of council. So I I think there's just a lot of, you know, we could go on forever regarding this. I'm just happy that there is something in place, that I think there's a direction given tonight to...
Do some better outreach and...
Brian, to do better outreach, not have front license plates be the, the, what you call it, what's the word? The priority.
Absolutely, understand that, too, and that's our practice.
And have our, have our code enforcement, you know, people be looking out for other things, because to be honest with you, today I was driving through the city and thought, I thought we had an ordinance for not brown lawns. You had to put some type of, you know, mitigating, what do you call it?
For what?
Whatever.
Some kind of ground cover, yes.
Some type of mitigating ground cover, and I'm thinking, every block, there must be fifteen lawns, and are we not giving them any notices? I mean, so we could go on and on forever. I just think that front license plate to me and to our deputy there, I'd rather have you be doing something else that really is, you know, looks like we're really engaged in public safety. I'd rather have you drive around the city, block two times, than take the time to give a front license plate, but that's my personal opinion, and I've had to hear this for the last month, so...
Unless that person was pulled over with no front, with no...
No, I think parking is a different, is a different issue.
What I'm saying is, if they were pulled over, they had no front license plate or no back license plate, usually that's indication that maybe that person's involved in some crime, and they should be pulled over.
No, I'm happy you pulled that that person over. But...
Thank you for the feedback.
All right. Okay, a little bit passionate about front license plates, as you can tell. All right, we move to...
Make sure it's on your car.
Make sure it's on your car, yes. We move to, what number are we on here?
Eleven.
Eleven. Update from our city manager.
Yeah, unfortunately, you have to hear from me one more time. Um, a couple, just a couple of quick items. One, Mr. Reimers is going to give an update on our vacant property ordinance, some of the steps we've taken right after it became effective. Uh, just as a reminder, for Mr. Azumi and Deputy Bowie, our neighborhood watch meeting, the last neighborhood watch meeting of the year will be this Thursday at five-thirty at, um, Live Oak Park, um, same location we had it before, and then just as a reminder, next year, we will go back to the regular cycle. So for those who couldn't make it last month, uh, the taco, uh, our, our Supreme Tacos...
Get there early if you want a taco.
We we were, uh, that was probably one of the largest, I think Mr. Jim Bazin agreed, one of the largest, uh, uh, attendance we've had of neighborhood watch. So, um, we'll see how this one goes, maybe some of the people who are interested, but just be there early for some tacos. We'll make, we'll do our best to accommodate, uh, every, to accommodate everybody. Um, and with that, too, uh, as we're going down the line, I'd thank you again for the approval of the extra overtime as part of the plans over the next few weeks, and especially as we get into the holiday season, you'll see his, um, Deputy Anchondo's weekly report to you, some of the, some of those activities as we, as we roll those out over the next, uh, weeks and months through the rest of the fiscal year. Um, thank you for approving the, uh, housing element tonight. I I, let me reiterate, um, again, Hestie Elude did a fantastic job. She was behind the scenes. Some of the, um, architectural designs and everything else you see, she's done a really great job, and she's a great resource to the staff and the community. Um, and thank you for Mr. Reimers' leadership in terms of working through the, a- all the hard work that you saw was, uh, not a, I'm not going to say a labor of love, but a labor of necessity in terms of dealing with the state. And we will be coming back to you with more of some of those implementation measures. So if you notice some of those implementation measures, really we're coming back to council. And I think to Scott's credit and the team's credit, we always try to think about what you, as a council representing the community, are looking for and how we can tailor that to fit Temple City is always our goal. One of the things, and it's okay, by the way, it's okay for the mayor to be here because we're only reporting out, but she did abstain from the discussion prior, but now this is now law, and we are, we are implementing this. Um, Mr. Reimers will give a quick update on the vacant property ordinance and the implementation of it. So, Mr. Reimers, if you would please.
Sure. Uh, back at the beginning of summer, the city council approved an ordinance that required vacant properties to make some improvements in regards to fencing and landscaping. Um, back in July, we sent out courtesy notices to the properties that were affected. Um, the ordinance stated that they had ninety days to come into compliance, um, so that ninety-day timeline comes up on October eighteenth. Um, so that's this week.
Today.
Yes, so, um...
Does that mean that, so that, when you say that, does that mean that they had until today to comply?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So, any other...
Have any?
Sorry.
Have any?
No. Um, we have, um, of the, uh, locations, one of them did talk to me.
Give him a warning.
But one of them did talk to me and asked for a thirty-day extension, which I'm allowed to grant under the code, um, because they are under lease, they're under lease negotiations, um, and they want the lease negotiations to complete so that they can, um, not do all the improvements since it won't be a vacant property anymore. Um, the other properties, um, there's activity occurring, but they haven't specifically asked. So in those cases, we will be opening a code enforcement case, and they will be going through the process. In code enforcement, we give, um, a a final letter, and then if they don't comply within the final letter, then we move to the administrative citation process.
And how many, how many lots are affected by this? Do we have a number?
There are five.
Five, okay.
And Scott, so the first process after today is they will get a notice technically just saying that, is it a citation-looking thing, or what is it?
So, um, if the city prosecutor's office says that our courtesy notice will stand as the first notice, then we can go straight to the final notice, which is a letter that says you need to comply, or we will move to the administrative citation process, and potentially you can be taken to court, either criminally or civilly. Um, so it kind of puts them on notice. If they don't comply by the timeline in that letter, then we move to the administrative citation process, um, where there's a first violation, a second violation, and a third violation, a citation, I should say, first, second, third citation, and then typically after the third citation, um, we would refer the case to the city prosecutor's office, and then they can take them to court either civilly or criminally.
What kind of timeline is that? Is that pretty...
Uh, the city prosecutor's office would tell us that we need to give them sufficient time to comply. We can't say we have to do it tomorrow if it's a large, um, improvement that needs to be made. So typically, it's within two weeks to four weeks.
So, after we, assuming the first notice, the first letters count as the first notice, so between the second and the third, how much time would, would we be looking at it? You said two, four weeks?
Two to four weeks is what the prosecutor's office would want us to give, you know?
Between the second and the third one? And then between the third one and the the pro- the city prosecutor would be another two to four weeks? Or we go directly to...
Usually between the citations, we give the, um, we give the property owner two weeks, depending on the extent of the violation. If it's a, if it's a life and safety issue, we reduce that down to three days. Um, if it's a significant, let's say someone needs to put a new roof on a structure, we can't tell them to do that within two weeks. So we have to give them a smaller goal, which would be you need to come and pull the permit within two weeks, and then the job needs to be completed within a month, something like that.
Just a, just a follow-up on a, two to four weeks for a larger property seems like a very short time to, you know, come and hire a contractor if they have been ignoring us thus far, even though they're not supposed to. Uh, if somebody would come to you and show you a contract they signed with a landscaping company, and they have a plan or perhaps even a permit that they need to pull, because if they have sprinkler system, they're supposed to pull a permit, would you allow them a little bit more time, right?
Typically, what we do is if somebody wants to comply, um, what we tell them is, what we can give them is time. So we put them on a plan, and we'll say, um, over the next two weeks, you need to submit a, you need to submit the names of the contractors, who you're going to do the business with, two weeks after that, you need to pull the permit, and then two weeks after that, you need to complete the job. And then if they don't meet those deadlines, then we may move to citation.
Scott, did any of the five ask any questions or call, say, you know, just, like, help me or what do I need to do type of things, or?
Yes, um, one of them did, and they asked us some questions. They said they didn't agree with the ordinance and so forth, uh, but we told them it's the ordinance, you have to comply, and we told them how to comply. The other one asked for the extension, uh, which I did grant. Uh, the other ones have not really responded. One of them has other code enforcement issues that they're working through right now, so they're kind of figuring things out.
All right, well, Brian?
That's, that, that concludes my report, Mayor.
Okay. Greg, you have some interesting things about telecommunicating, right?
All right, Assembly Bill twenty-four forty-nine goes into effect on January first. As you all, well, as you may remember, the Brown Act allows teleconferencing under any circumstances where one of the five of you, or even two of the five of you, are not present here in the chambers. The normal circumstances require you to post, or require us to post on the agenda where you will be, require you to post the agenda on the door to the room where you will be, and require you to keep that door open and let the public in, which creates all kinds of funny circumstances when people are in hotels or or other places. Um, as you also know, under Assembly Bill three sixty-one, which you renewed your resolution for earlier, uh, tonight, uh, that bill is in effect until January first of two thousand twenty-four, and during any proclaimed state of emergency and while other requirements are met, uh, you don't have to follow the old traditional requirements. In part due to the success of that law in giving some flexibility, uh, to government officials, Assembly Bill twenty-four forty-nine was passed. Um, under this law, uh, members of the legislative body, yourselves or your commissioners, uh, may attend public meetings remotely without identifying the teleconference site on the agenda, without ensuring public accessibility, without posting a notice on your door, uh, as long as certain procedures are followed. First off, the quorum of a legislative body has to be in person in a single physical location open to the public, essentially here in the chambers, which means that three of you have to be here, the remaining two can be remotely. Um, while gone, or or during this process, if we trigger this, uh, the legislative body has to provide a way for the public to remotely, uh, hear, observe, and address the legislative body, uh, either a two-way audiovisual platform or a two-way telephone service simultaneous with a live webcasting of the meeting. Uh, the agenda or other sort of service must provide notice of how the public can access the meeting and offer comments, and I'll tell you why that's important in a minute. Uh, the agenda, uh, does have to identify and include the opportunity, uh, to attend in person, not just remotely, but to come in. Um, and finally, if there's a disruption in the meeting broadcast or in the ability to take call-in or internet-based public comment, uh, everything has to stop, no further... No further action can be taken on agenda items until that issue is resolved. So if we have any kind of broadcasting or Zoom problem, we have to stop. Now, there are two situations in which you can trigger this. They're called just cause and emergency circumstances. Just caused is, just cause is defined as caregiving of a child, parent, grandparent, grandchild, sibling, spouse, or domestic partner that requires remote participation, or a contagious illness that prevents the member from attending in person, or a need related to a physical or mental disability, or travel while on business of the legislative body or another state or local agency. In order to participate remotely under that provision, you have to notify the legislative body, notify the city, you could notify through Brian or Peggy, obviously, but notify at the earliest possible opportunity. The latest that would be, would be the start of a meeting. And you have to provide a general description of the circumstances related to what the just cause is. Just cause can only be triggered for each individual once or twice a year, maximum two meetings a year. Your other option is emergency circumstances, which means a physical or family medical emergency that prevents you from attending in person. Under that, again, you have to request that the legislative body allow you to participate. And in this case, under emergency circumstances, the legislative body has to actually approve it. So under just cause, you just state, "These are my circumstances," and you go. Under emergency, the rest of the council or for a commission, the commission has to approve it. If it comes up after the agenda's been published, the request can be made at the start of a meeting. You don't have to agendize the vote on it, you can just take a vote right at the start of the meeting. Again, there has to be a general description of the circumstances and while no personal medical information has to be closed, you do, has to be disclosed, you do have to give some, at least 20 words, or no, I'm sorry, up to 20 words of a general description of what the emergency is. And finally, under emergency circumstances, there are... You cannot participate more than three consecutive months under emergency circumstances and not more than 20% of the total calendar year, total meetings in a calendar year. So there's a lot of details to it. Basically, the basics of it, after you get through all the legal details, is talk to Peggy about it, she and I will work through it. If you have caregiving of another family member, if you do have a contagious illness, some physical or mental disability need, that could very easily be a surgery, which, you know, is normal. Travel while on the business of the legislative body, Councilman Chavez was at the JPIA conference two weeks ago on behalf of the city, that certainly would count for just cause. Or another state or local agency, we have county employees here, you're on official travel of the county, that would also count. But be careful in using your just cause because you only get two a year. Emergency circumstances really is a medical emergency for you or a family member and we can work through those with you. The nice thing about all this, it lets us keep using Zoom when truly necessary. The difficult thing about this, the city clerk's office has to rush around a little bit if the emergency comes up late to make sure that we're allowing Zoom access or some other telephone access where the public can stay involved. So if you see this coming, let us know ahead of time and we'll make sure it all lines up for you well. That's my report. Thank you very much.
And again, when is this going to end?
January 1.
Okay.
And, and as we said earlier, what we're currently operating under will end at the end of February. The governor has said the state of emergency will end, but we'd really rather start transitioning over, so I would imagine in December, well, I would say in November, your second meeting in November, instead of having the renewal of the resolution on as a consent item, we'll probably put it on as a business item so you can talk about whether you even want it in December or whether you're ready to cut it loose and we'll go from there.
So the governor's action in February won't have an impact on this?
On the new bill, not at all. The new bill is very, I would put it this way, what we're operating under today is pandemic or state of emergency-based. The new bill is individual circumstance-based and it's lessons learned from the pandemic that some bit of flexibility for governing bodies really helps you stay more involved rather than having to miss. So it's a good thing, I think.
Okay. Thank you, Greg. All right. We move to item 13, council reports regarding ad hoc or standing committee meetings. Did we have any? No? No? Okay. Council items separate from the city manager's regular agenda. Councilmember Viscara?
I'm trying to think. I really don't have any items right now. By the way, we did go to the conference, JPA, and our city attorney gave a wonderful presentation. Everybody was impressed and liked it. Yea, Greg.
And it was on social media? Okay.
That was...
Councilmember, you?
I only have one rather important item, I suppose. You know, as all of us are aware, there are some controversies at the City of Los Angeles City Council. As a matter of fact, they cannot come to a quorum, city business is coming to a halt. Not to comment on their merits, I think that, I just want to say this. I've been with the city quite some time and been working with our, my esteemed colleagues here for a long, long time and working with our city staff, our city manager, our city attorney, and so forth. You know, I must say that I'm proud that I haven't seen any behavior even coming close to what happened at the city. So, but, and I think the public needs to hear at least that, you know, we don't condone, we would not tolerate behaviors like that in, in front of the camera, like here. And what, I think what I'm particularly proud of is all my colleagues here. You see us here in one way, enclosed door, when we take off our jacket and put on our t-shirt and see us walk on the street or grocery store. We're the same people. I think one thing I'm really particularly proud with our folks here is that we're not here just to be politicians. We're here because we want to care for the community, as you can hear, and we get really detailed into even parking tickets before we care. And, and what you see is what you get. There is no public, Vincent, you and the private Vincent, you and I, I'm gonna say, you know, I'm proud of my colleagues as the same way. I've never seen anything different, nor do I see anything different from city staff. So I just want to put it out there that, you know, what's happening in some jurisdictions, I, you know, maybe, maybe very discouraging to, and also harmful to public's trust in government. And, but I really want to say that I think our public doesn't need to worry about that of us. I haven't seen anything like that here for a number of years and I trust they won't happen in the future. And I'm proud of my colleagues here. We don't always agree, but we, we, we never talk like that, whether here in front of the public or behind the scene in private. There are no closed-door, smoke-filled room where we do close deals, you know. So I just want to put it out there and, and the city is, I think it's, doesn't operate like that.
Thank you, Vincent. Councilmember Chavez?
Thank you. Thanks, Vince. I appreciate those words and totally agree with you, you know, like, I mean, ever since we've been on this council, you know, we've gone through a lot of different members and stuff and, you know, nothing has really changed. I mean, we, as you say, we disagree, but we're not disagreeable. And after the meetings, we're all getting along and we don't even remember what we talked about, you know? We're, "Well, how's the family doing and what's going on?" and everything. So it's refreshing and, you know, it's funny, somebody was asking me the other day, and I get called, you know, asked this a lot, I'm sure you guys, "Well, what do you do for a living?" And I'm getting to it's reluctant for me to say, I'm not only an attorney, but I'm also a city council member because people kind of, unfortunately, look at those two occupations in a bad light these days. And so I usually tell them, "Well, I teach," and they're okay with that, you know? But, you know, it's getting to that point and it's just, it's just a shame that, and I hope, and I think our, our community understands that we're not lumped in with those kind of things and we shouldn't be. And I think if any of us were involved in that, we wouldn't be around very long, so it's, it's good and that's what keeps us here. So, thanks. Thanks, Vince, for those words. I appreciate it. I do, just to follow up what Fernando said earlier, want to thank staff and the council members who did attend the California JPI conference a couple of weeks ago. As they always do, they presented opportunities, educational seminars regarding risk management and, more importantly, how we can avoid liabilities by the city. And so very informative and of course, as Fernando mentioned, our own city attorney, Mr. Murphy, was there and we're very proud of the job that he does for the authority as well, so that was good. Couple of, couple of things, just to let you guys know, we do, the JPI does a pretty good job of getting keynote speakers or people who we think would be interesting. And there were really two great speakers this time. One was the police chief from the city of Boston and talked about the Marathon bombing and all the details that went through that. As you guys know, he was very passionate about, I mean, he was to the point where he was in tears after all these years and you could just feel it in his heart and his soul, you know, what the city had to go through and the different things that they did and what they've done since to avoid things like that from happening. And of course, you're never going to eliminate that completely, but it was really good. And then, of course, we ended the conference with a very, I don't want to say disturbing, but I guess worrisome, talk from Lucy Jones. Many of you know who Lucy Jones is from Caltech. She's always the one who gets on TV when we have an earthquake. And she had, you know, I wouldn't say bad news for us, but, you know, we're still all waiting for that big one. It's 300 years past due. So it's a little, little late and, you know, one of these days. But the interesting thing, she's not really working on earthquakes so much anymore. She's actually working more on climate change and the effects of climate change in our communities and how that's affected.
But she indicated they're connected.
Yeah, well, they are connected, but she's spending more time on the climate change than she is on studying the earthquakes. And some of you may have seen in the newspaper, I think it was just a few days before she gave her speech, how they've discovered a new fault, a larger one, that they're a little concerned about. But, and then she gave, she had books, everyone got one of her books and I started reading, I don't know if any of you did, but I had to stop because it was kind of depress, not depressing, but worrisome, you know?
Scary.
It is scary, yeah, it is scary, but it is reality. But she was very nice and did a good job. So we all had a good time and, you know, they, obviously, JPI does a good job, a little biased, but we'll get a report on it next week, we have a meeting and, but I think it's, and what I'd like the public to know also is that there is no charge for the attendees. JPI does not charge for us to attend the conference. Of course, we have to pay for the hotel reservations, things like that, but actually attending the three-day conference, there is no charge, I think, right? Yeah, so...
It's one of the only ones I'm aware of that does not charge.
Yeah, it's one of the few that doesn't charge. I mean, some of those are getting quite expensive just to attend. I think League of California Cities was like $500 or $600 to sign up.
Well, it's not getting a free meal at the casino, you do pay.
Yeah, right, right, yeah, exactly. But, yeah, so, you know, that's a good thing for us. It makes it, makes it more accessible. In fact, I think this was the largest attendance we had at any conference ever. So that was a good thing. And of course, getting back into the swing of things is good, so. That's all I have. Thank you.
How many pounds, councilman?
Oh, my God. Well, the last night I was there, I just had to walk away. I couldn't eat anymore. That's the problem.
Is that it?
Me and buffets don't mix very well.
You and me both.
It's a good thing you didn't go, you would have had problems, saying.
Is that it?
That's it, thank you.
Okay. Just to follow up on conferences, it really was an informative conference and I think the big takeaway from Greg's talk on social media was basically, keep your personal...
Don't do it.
Yeah. Don't do it. And if you do do it, keep your personal, Facebook personal and your city council Facebook open to everybody and put everything there that you'd want the world to see, right? Pretty much. But great job, Greg. It was nice to have you, see you in action doing something different than what we're normally see you doing. Contract Cities Conference, they are asked, was informative also, you do pay for that one, you know? They are looking...
You know, the Contract Cities, they send us those who didn't attend, we got the slideshow.
Good.
So that was nice.
Yeah, and Fernando is our delegate. And Fernando...
Did you go? I didn't even know I was the delegate.
He didn't know he was the delegate, so he forgot, I think. But anyways, he was reminded by the president, Jeff, that he is the delegate. He basically followed Fernando all around JPIA for about an hour and a half, letting him know that. But they are looking for legislative committee members and you do not have to be the mayor or the delegate or...
You have to be a city council member.
Just, you need to be a city council member. And they are having a ledge day, I believe it's in, is that February, Greg? Do you know? I think, no? I think it's late January or February.
Are you talking about the legislative day they always have every year?
Yes, I think it's February, right.
I think it's in February. It's after the first of the year.
They are looking for people to go up to Sacramento with them. They'll have a full day scheduled. You can go for the day, you can spend the night, but they are really looking for people to go up and speak to the legislators about local control and keeping...
I think Fernando would be excellent at something, I guess.
Actually, I did that 20 years ago.
Well, there you go. You have experience.
I was, I was on the committee then.
So would you like to sign up?
I froze to death up there.
So that is available for everyone. Went to the Water Fest this week and there were quite a few local officials, everyone's concerned about water, and they had a representative from the mosquito district. We've had these sort of short showers that have rained enough just to fill your pots and the round things where you sit in your pots, whatever that round piece is called.
I want you to know that I listened to what you always tell us.
Okay.
And after we got this last rain, it was Saturday night, Saturday night when it poured for like 10 minutes, the next day I went out and I dumped all those pots.
Oh, I'm so proud of you.
I was thinking about you when I did that.
Yes, thank you. Please do that. As colder weather comes around, then the mosquito population declines, so, but it's still a good thing to go ahead and make sure that you, tip and toss, they call it. And William, I forgot you. But I was reminded right now. When you're looking at me like, "You forgot me, Mayor."
That's okay. No, you can finish.
No, that's all. That's all. I'm finished, yes.
Actually, speaking of water, I know last time we had the director from, Mr. Love from Upper San Gabriel, as well as Director Charles Trevino, asked him some questions, but it was kind of like loaded questions because I knew he couldn't really answer them. But what always strikes me about the conservation effort is, while I think in principle it's good that we're teaching everyone this, but for some reason, no one ever talks about the fact that the majority of water usage is not in residential or commercial use. So if you look at the entire kind of western region, I want to say, recently, I was really...
Industrial and farm?
It's agriculture.
Agriculture.
Yeah, yeah. And like alfalfa of all plants consumes like an inordinate amount of water. So really, it's like they're asking us to conserve, which it's good, but then no one ever addresses the elephant in the room because of all these...
Because they can. Because they're ledges, because of their water rights.
Yeah, which, which I just, I just think in the larger scheme of things is so unfair.
You know, water rights is one of the biggest areas of law in the state of California, so most contested and biggest area, it's crazy. It really is different.
There's a great book called The Water Buffalo and it talks about the history of water and how it came into California. water and how it came into California. If you enjoy reading about water, it's a great book to...
But you're right, you make a good point that it's, you know, the everyday, all this is on residents and us, but it's gonna take more than just us doing it.
Yeah, 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 and obviously, we don't really have jurisdiction over that, nor do we have farmland, so that's not really an issue that comes in front of us to really talk about, but just kind of if you step back and look at the bigger picture, it's kind of interesting. But anyway, you brought up Water Fest, so I just thought of, thought of that.
It was interesting, there was a lot of different organizations out. There are, anyway, and it rained.
Yeah, I know.
It rained that day, it rained that morning.
That was Saturday, wasn't it Saturday?
Saturday, yeah.
But, but Ma, Mayor, just one, one last thing, I, I just want to say, I'm, I'm gonna try to make the Neighborhood Watch, but I'm really glad to hear that we have such a great turnout. And Councilmember Chavez just told me we ran out tacos right there last time, so, so yeah, that's, that's great. I'm, I'm glad, to, to me, having the Neighborhood Watch meetings back in person is a great sign that, you know, we're, we're bringing like our programming back to normal, back to pre- pandemics, and so I'm very encouraged by, by that development. And, you know, last but not least, I, I know we have a Halloween carnival coming up, right? On, that's a Monday, right? October 31st?
Thank you for mentioning that, Mayor Potem. Yes, on the 31st.
It's on Halloween.
On Halloween, yeah, so looking forward to that. Again, again, sort of this programming that we're, we're bringing back, so very happy to see that, so that's all, thank you.
And just one last comment of Oklahoma hip, you know?
Mr. City Manager, do we have a water gauge for the city that tells us how much precipitation we're getting?
I do not believe so.
I just so happen to have one that I keep on my gate at home. By the way, we got almost half an inch in this last little rainstorm here. I'm, I'm interested in that, and I, I like it, so I will volunteer to be the official water guy.
I will check in with you, sir.
What if it rains more at your house than it does somewhere else, though? That's not...
He's close, we won't disclose his address, but he's close enough. He, he's pretty close.
Yeah, you're close enough, I guess.
You use that median for housing element numbers, you know? I just want to thank you again, Vincent, for your comments, and I want the public to know this council and the councils before us for the last, since I've been on council 12 years or so, have always appreciated the diversity that's in this city, and we've appreciated so many different cultures in everything that we do, and helped people assimilate into a new place, no matter what culture they're, you know, they come from. And so I just think we're, we're very blessed to have the community that we do that embraces so much diversity, and it, it was very unfortunate, and, you know, I guess that's all you can say, is people make bad decisions, and that was a horrible one. But on a happier note, we're gonna hopefully have good weather for our Halloween carnival, and we are adjourned.